Okay, well, good evening, everybody at home as well. Welcome to the February 5th, 2018, meeting of the Board of Selectmen. All members of the Board are present this evening. We are just leaving our 6:30 scheduled executive session to approve executive session minutes from August 12th of 2013, September 23rd of 2013, September 27th of 2013, and September 22nd of 2014, in accordance with General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 22. It's good to see a nice full room. Thank you all for being here. If I could ask everyone to join me and stand for the pledge allegiance, please?
Pledge allegiance. This is Jimis Flag of the United States of America, and to a republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. We do have transmission of Treasury Warrants 30, 30A, 31, and 31A. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded by Mr. Kira. Any question on that? I see none. All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you very much. We have, let's see, two sets of minutes from open session to approve the meeting, the minutes of November 7th, 2017. Do I have a motion to approve as to the content?
So moved.
Motion's made by Mr. Bendel.
I'll second that.
Seconded, I'll accept by Mr. Loud. Any discussion on the minutes of November 27th? I see none. All in favor? Unanimous to approve? And the minutes from January 29th, 2018, very recently. Do I have a motion to approve as to form?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Made by Mr. McCoy.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Bendel. All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. Our scheduled 7 o'clock appointment is one that I will have to vacate the room for, and I'll explain why. I have a bit of a conflict of interest. I, in my day job, the one that actually pays the bills around the house, I'm in sales for an organization that sells to analog devices. And as such, and I hope to continue to do that, and do more of it, by the way, and so as such, it would be inappropriate for me to both participate in conversation or take participate in any votes as it relates to the matter that's before us. It is, by the way, identified in Mass. General Laws, Chapter 268A, and, let's see, the law generally prohibits me from taking any official action on matters affecting my own financial interests. This would, and as a matter affecting one of these interests comes up for consideration at a selectman's meeting, the wisest course of action is to leave the room during discussion, deliberation, and the vote on the matter, and make sure that the minutes of the meeting reflect my recusal. So, I am, in fact, recusing myself for this portion of the meeting. At the conclusion of your discussion, I would ask that one of you gentlemen get me at the door, and I'll come in and we'll pick up the ball for the second appointment of the evening. So I give the you over to my colleague, Mr. McCoy, to run the rest of this portion of the meeting. Thank you all.
All right. Thank you. All right, it's now 7 o'clock appointment. Lynn Tokarzak, Government Incentives Consultant with Business Strategies Development, Inc., Analog Devices, Tax Increment Financing. Excuse a little bit of a call, though. So if you want to analog, folks, would you like to take a table over here? Please, a seat. Thank you. First of all, let me say good evening. Two meetings ago, I was not here because I was having some surgery, so I couldn't be here. So, obviously, that's why we're here this evening. So, if you want to just tell us basically what you're looking for, and then we can open it up for discussion, I'll go to the manager when the time comes. So, the floor is yours. If you can introduce yourself, your name, title, for the record, okay? Thank you.
Sure. My name is Lynn Tokarzak, Government Incentives-
Oh, my goodness, Janie. I apologize.
That's okay. Lynn Tokarzak, Government Incentives Consultant. I'm here representing Analog Devices. To my, would you like me to introduce?
Absolutely.
Okay. To my left is Mike Arera, who's the Vice President, Supply Chain Planning and Logistics, and the General Manager for Wilmington and Chelmsford Analog Devices. To my right is Marnie Seif, who's the Chief Legal Officer and Secretary, Senior Vice President of Communications and Brand. And to the far right is Cynthia McMakin, who's the Associate General Counsel of Analog Devices. So, thank you for inviting us here tonight.
All right, thank you. I know I wasn't at that meeting. You came a couple meetings ago. They want to give some presentation? Because I'm not really up to-
Yes, let me just introduce the process. So, we met probably a week and a half or so ago with representatives from Analog, and the proposal that was provided was a, first of all, an explanation that the company is looking to do some fairly significant expansion, and they can get into the details with their presentation tonight. As part of that effort, they are seeking what is referred to as a tax increment financing agreement with the town of Wilmington. These agreements, there are a number of communities across the state that enter into these agreements. They're really, at least in part, intended to foster economic development, either in the form of increasing employment in a particular community, or retaining jobs, also things like just generally expanding the economic activity in a given area. So, the request was made of us that the Analog be able to come before the Board of Selectmen and make a presentation describing their proposal with the expectation or the hope that the Board would favorably consider the proposal, and ultimately, what is being asked for is that the Board authorize a, an article on the town meeting warrant for May 5th, and then that the, with the approval of the town meeting on May 5th, if that should be the case, there's a filing that would be done with a state agency, and they meet in June to consider this application. So, there's a number of different steps, but I'll let, I'll let Lynn and her folks get into the specifics.
Okay. Thank you again, and thank you to the Board of Selectmen again for inviting us here tonight, and to Jeff Hull, and the other local officials that we have met with. We're very appreciative of you, your interest in the proposed Analog Devices Expansion Plan here in Wilmington, so, and as well as to keep Analog Devices in Wilmington, and to discuss potential tax incentives. We have a brief slide presentation this evening, basically in three segments. The first is more or less the background and history of the company. The second is the company's proposed expansion plans, and then the third is the company's intent to apply for tax incentives. So, again, this is informational only. We're very appreciative that we've been working with Jeff and his team to discuss potential tax increment financing package. So I'm going to turn it over to Marnie Seif.
Thank you so much. And again, thank you all for giving us this opportunity to speak with you tonight. So I'm going to try and figure out which button moves this, this one? It's-
It's to the right, you know, to the right side, and then to the round. Is it my personal?
I don't know. Cynthia, will you be my, all right.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. So, I want to start out, as Lynn said, we'll give you a couple of different segments here. Okay. So, let me start by telling you a little bit about Analog Devices generally, so you can understand who we are and what we do. And you'll see here, this slide shows a picture of an electronics board. And those plastic packages, they're, those black squares are what we make, which are called semiconductors. And semiconductors are really integral building blocks for all kinds of technologies that you use every day, and many that are in industry and other kinds of applications. So it's quite sophisticated design and manufacture of electronics. We've been around for a long time. We were incorporated in 1965, which makes us practically ancient by technology company standards. But the company has grown, you know, pretty consistently since it was created in 1965, and our pride is to really solve very difficult engineering challenges that our customers face. So we are currently headquartered in Norwood, Massachusetts. This is our building here. We also have facilities in Chelmsford. We just opened a facility in Boston, a very beautiful building in the Innovation District. And Wilmington is our largest campus in the state. At the Wilmington campus, we have, in addition to offices and so forth, and research, we have manufacturing, and Mike will tell you more about that location. But worldwide, we have many, many locations, including 45 R&amp;D centers in different parts of the world. But our biggest facilities are now in Silicon Valley, in California, in Washington State. We manufacture significantly also in Ireland, Singapore, Malaysia, and a very big facility in the Philippines. So we're quite global. We have 15,000 employees around the world. And, you know, over time, as the company has grown, we're trying to actually consolidate down, to put more weight in fewer locations, because we're so dispersed. So, we make stuff you use every day, but you really never see it, and by our name, that describes what we do. Analog is the world. Everything is analog. And so, in the natural world, anything you can, that is pressure, that is heat, that is light, anything that is measurable, that needs to be converted into digital, that's what we do, and we convert it back out, and we make all kinds of other technologies as well. But our expertise is around that very precise measuring and sensing of the digital world, of the natural world, and how it connects to the digital world. So we're a bridge between digital technology and the natural world. We have almost 45,000 different products. It's incredible. We put out about 300 new products a year, and around the world, we have in excess of 125,000 customers. Some are very small, and some are very big. You've heard of many of them. They're all sizes. So, we've talked generally about these electronics. They're in, as I said, pretty much every application that exists out there. That drone that you see has camera and other navigational technology. We helped to supply that. Your car is really a marvel of electronics, and cars today, the innovation is really happening in electronics, not so much in steering and in tires and all of that stuff. It's really in safety, cabin experience, entertainment, and sound control and so forth, and all of those applications are areas where we excel. Your mobile phone has so many different kinds of technology, and it would be hard to describe, but we do provide to some of the largest mobile phone makers, some of the features that, for example, make your camera look better when your hand is shaking, your image is stabilized partly due to our work. So that's just some of the idea of the breadth of the markets in which we participate. As you'll see here, we're trying to give you a broader picture of the different industries that we serve. Communications is a big, big ticket for us. You know, once upon a time, it was said that there was no cellphone call ever made on the planet that did not transit through Analog Devices technology, which was an incredible feat at the time. In addition, industrial applications are very important to us, so as factories automate, our technology is in there. Healthcare is also important. When you go have a CT scan, some of that imaging, these big racks of imaging and very high specificity images come courtesy of our technology. So that just gives you a sense of the breadth of things that we do, and again, supporting, you know, as we said, thousands and thousands of products, and tens of thousands of customers around the world. You know, as I said, we're not so much of a household name, but for people who know us, they understand the excellence of the products that we create and the markets that we serve. In 2017, we were named one of the top places to work by the Boston Globe. We've won many, many industry and customer honors, and Newsweek just ranked us as one of the top, in the top 20th percentile for green companies in the United States, due partly to the good work that happens at Wilmington in manufacturing, as they seek to reduce the footprint of our company and create more sustainable measures. So we, every year, use less water, less electricity, and recycle more. So we have a very good reputation for being a green company, in addition to being an innovator. Okay, I'll turn it over to my colleague, Mike.
So, thank you, and thanks for the opportunity. So I'm going to talk a little bit about what we're actually proposing here, and why we're proposing it. So, first of all, we're proud to be the largest employer and manufacturer here in Wilmington. I personally have worked in the town here for 20 some odd years, and I think we have a good relationship here with the town. We have here, and we've been here for 40 years in town, grown over time. Our presence, we now currently have about 500,000 square feet of office and manufacturing space combined. A lot of research and development, the things Marnie was talking about, not only are they designed there, and a lot of lab work and engineering work, we do manufacturing there. We make wafers, silicon wafers, that go into those packages that Marnie was describing. So what are we trying to get done here? We have, and Marnie talked about some of the other facilities we have. We have a facility down in Norwood. We have three facilities now up in Chelmsford that have come via acquisitions that we've made. Hitite Microwave was a company that we acquired several years ago up in Chelmsford, two facilities up there. More recently, that was a Massachusetts company. We recently acquired, in the last year, a company called Linear Technologies, and are also a semiconductor manufacturer, California company, but with a presence here in Massachusetts, and an R&amp;D center up in Chelmsford. So, as we look at, you know, our business, we're an innovation company. Innovation is about collaboration and engineers working together. We want to get people together onto one campus. And we, when we do that, as we think about this now, we really want a presence when we do that. So we want a place that, you know, we're recruiting, and we'll talk a little about this, the best engineers out of all the top schools around the country to come work at Analog Devices. We want a facility that draws them in. So wherever we go, we want it to be, you know, a real kind of a showcase, kind of a place that really attracts and retains the best talent. We have people to come out of school, we want them to come work there, and we want them to stay there for many, many years. So that's what we're trying to get done. We're already here in Wilmington. As you know, we have a large campus. We have 40 some acre campus that we already have, 500,000 square feet, as I mentioned. So it's at least an option for us to explore, why not Wilmington? So that's what we're here to talk about. So here's what we're talking about doing. That's an aerial view of our site. On the left is Warburn Street. On the bottom right, kind of on the diagonal, I don't have a pointer here, but that's industrial way. And then the long kind of driveway, meandering driveway, that actually, we added that several years ago, that parcel became available adjacent to us, between us and industrial way, which we purchased, opened it up, it's just green space, and so it's another kind of point of egress on and off of our campus away from Warburn Street. The buildings, there's a couple of R&amp;D buildings there, and a manufacturing building on the site. What's shown, kind of in the rectangle, is the proposed location of the new R&amp;D building, 174,000 square foot office and lab space. The circle in the middle, I'll show you, the circle in the middle is a, what we're, this is kind of the showcase piece of this. It's a hub that's going to connect the whole campus together, call it the community hub. And then not shown, but kind of just to the right of the rectangle, would be a 215,000 square foot parking garage. So the idea of a parking garage is, we don't want to, you know, we need parking, obviously, for the employees. We don't want to pave, we want to keep the green space, the green space as much as we can, and that campus feel, so we'd put a garage and keep the rest of that, the meadow there open. It's a good walking path. People use that. It's part of the environment we're trying to create. And then, in addition, those, the two office buildings, we want to come in, and we want to completely renovate those. One of those was built, I think, in the mid-'90s, the other one in circa 1999 or 2000. And so they're dated, the interior, you know, the style is not the millennial-friendly kind of view, thing that we're trying to get now in terms of the, it's a high-tech company. We want to attract high-tech talent. We really need to kind of renovate the interiors there to make them the kind of workspace that, that, the talent we're trying to recruit is looking for. So this is, the two buildings, a depiction of what they might look like. The office building on the bottom right, and then the community center in the middle. Key here is, we're talking about spending, what we've estimated, $157 million investment. So it's a huge investment that we're talking about making, not one that comes easy for any company, and certainly one that we're, that is a difficult or important decision for us to make. So 157 million, 143 of that is the new facilities, and I'll talk a little bit more about what's in those facilities, and then renovating the other, the existing buildings as well, the interiors of those buildings for another 14 million. So total $157 million investment is what we've estimated the cost to be. So here's just another kind of depiction of what the campus would look like. And again, we're really kind of going for this kind of showcase type, and really try to keep a campus feel. So, we got an office building that's a three-story LEED-certified building, so Marnie talked to you about our, you know, our corporate social responsibility and sustainability things that we find important as a company. We would build these to LEED certification, both the office building and the hub, which is a sustainability certification. The community hub is going to include a campus kitchen, cafe, an auditorium, a fitness center, and a lot of meeting space. So this is really kind of both formal and informal kind of collaboration and meeting space. So it truly is meant to be the hub, the different engineers in the various R&amp;D buildings can kind of congregate here. We're going to have, you know, customer demo rooms. Really, we want to make this, we're envisioning, to kind of really transform the place and make it the kind of place that both our customers are impressed by, and certainly our employees want to come to work there. So, we currently have 1,600 full-time employees here in Wilmington on the campus here, 1,600. So what we're trying to get done here is, we want to keep them here. And so if we were to consolidate here, then obviously, not only would those 1,600 employees would stay here, as a footnote, 56 employees that live in Wilmington are employees at Analog Devices here in Wilmington. We're talking about relocating about 600 full-time jobs from, not from our other Massachusetts suburban campuses. We would consolidate onto this campus, with the expanded campus. We're not going to, Marnie talked about, we just made a fairly large investment in the Innovation Center District down in Boston, so we'd retain that, but we're really talking about other suburban campuses, consolidation into one location, and Wilmington is what we're talking about here. Creating approximately 50 new full-time jobs over the next five years, and that's, those are incremental jobs, and that's kind of an estimate. We actually do quite a bit of hiring every year. We would certainly, any jobs on the campus, existing or new, would be open to qualified Wilmington residents, of course. And we offer very competitive salaries and benefits, anything from type of jobs, anything from production workers in the factory, and mechanics and maintenance people to support all that, up through every kind of engineer that you could imagine. We've got chemical engineers, mechanical engineers, electrical engineers, software engineers, industrial engineers, and we have a lot of them. So, development people, operations people, like part of the, part of the company I work in. And then, of course, we're talking about bringing corporate headquarters here, so that brings the whole executive, the executives and their staffs, and the moniker, you know, you know, Analog Devices, a Wilmington company with it. So, and I mentioned here, we do, we're very active in terms of college recruiting. We have actually a very active college intern program and co-op program at all of our facilities, and certainly here in Wilmington, and we do a lot of college recruiting, trying to bring people in, which is, again, why we recognize now, some of the companies we're competing with, in terms of the environment they provide, that we need to, we need to up our game a little bit in terms of the facilities. Economic impact, you know, we've done some studies, either directly or through the, you know, the community, and we spend something estimated in the $5 million range annually with local businesses, you know, restaurants, catering, retail establishments, et cetera. There's a whole ecosystem around our company, not just directly with Analog employees, but we have, you know, cleaning services and landscaping services and everything that goes, you know, all the trades, you know, we need to help from all those people like that at our company. And we have a lot of visitors that come in, both around the country and internationally, to all of our campuses, and so wherever we consolidate, that would all be more centrally concentrated, but a lot of visitors that come in and stay and spend money and et cetera. We've been here, I mentioned, we've been here 40 years. We like to think we're, we take a lot of pride in being what we think is a good citizen in the town. We have a lot of community involvement. We both kind of, on a financial basis, we donate money for a 4th of July celebration. We recently spent, spent some money on tree planting, which I think there was an article in the, in the, I saw an article just forwarded to me, I guess, the other day on that, which was exciting to see our name out there for that. We, Little League, things like that. We certainly, as a company, our culture is really very much about education, and we're proud to support educational programs. We do some scholarships for engineering students in the high school here, part of the school business partnership. We host the annual teacher grant award breakfast on our campus. We donate computers and furniture and things like that. We're very active with the DACA program, STEM initiatives, support things like golf tournaments, you know, for scholarships. So, we, and our employees in the town, even, by the way, employees that don't live in the town, like to support the local community and things at the high school, and we're part of the Wilmington Dukesbury Chamber of Commerce.
So, just to recap on the benefits to Wilmington, which we feel is very compelling, is really, it's about keeping the largest and longstanding manufacturer here in Wilmington, should this project, should the company make a decision, a corporate real estate decision, to stay and grow in Wilmington. Bringing a corporate headquarters to Wilmington, that's very exciting, as Mike alluded to. Retaining jobs and creating jobs. Also, on the financial side, this would generate significant permit fees through new construction, permit fees, so that would be substantial revenue coming into the town. Increasing the real estate taxes with this major new construction project, as well as renovation. So again, that would be bringing new real estate taxes to the community. And increasing meals taxes as well, with all the visitors and all the spend by the employees and the company, it would be generating additional meals tax revenue. So overall, a positive impact on the local business and community. So I just wanted to take a few minutes on this next slide to talk about the tax incentives and ATIF, Tax Increment Financing. So this is a program under the state's Economic Development Center Program. The office, the Massachusetts Office of Business Development oversees this particular program, and there are, these, this is an economic development tool to help companies make a decision to stay in a community, to grow in a community, to retain and create jobs, and it's the economic development tool for a municipality to retain a business or attract a business. And so, there are state and local, state and municipal tax incentives. So on the state side, there's a statutory state tax credit that would be available to the company. So that part is the state. And then, on the municipal side, what is known here is tax increment financing, a TIF. So, what is a TIF? So, the beauty about a TIF is that the town doesn't lose a dime on the existing taxes. So, whatever Analog Devices is paying to the town, the town will remain collecting 100% of the existing real estate tax revenue. So again, the town doesn't lose any existing revenue. The tax exemption is based on the incremental increase of taxes, assessed value of the taxes, therefore it brings in new tax revenue. So essentially, a TIF is a discount on future taxes. So the town would collect new tax, new net tax revenue on an annual basis every year. So for a TIF, the allowed term is between five to 20 years, with the minimum, with an exemption terms of, the minimum is 1%, and the maximum is 100%. So, overall, that is what a TIF is. We'll discuss the process in a minute, but first, I, we thought it was important for the company to share with you why tax incentives are important to them.
So, first of all, I talked about the cost of the project here. So we're talking about spending north of $150 million. So it's a big investment for the company. So financially, you know, there's not just the upfront expense, the operating cost that goes with that.
So we're looking to, to offset that in some way. It's quite the, for the kind of facility we need to, to build, uh, to attract the kind of talent and retain. As I talked about, um, it's, it's, uh, it's premium space and therefore it's expensive, uh, not just for the kind of space, but for the technology and, uh, Innovation Center. Quite honestly, as we look now, so, um, and where might we, we do this? Marnie said, you know, we just spent, uh, made a big investment in Boston because that's where a lot of the kids out of school wanna go work in Boston. Uh, we look around other communities. It's, um, honestly, it's Wilmington's tax rate is, is on the high side. It's higher than, quite a bit actually higher than the other communities, Chelmsford and Norwood, where we currently operate. Actually, quite a bit higher than Boston's, uh, property tax rate. So this becomes kind of a tipping point, the economics of the whole program. And quite honestly, there's a couple of elements of, I guess, you know, um, where we select to do this expansion and consolidation. And I don't know how to describe this, but basically we're looking for, Marnie kind of mentioned that we're a company that all you use our products, but we kind of a low profile. People don't really know who Analog Devices is. We actually wanna start to up our presence and get a higher profile because we want the, the engineers kind of know who we are. But we want them to say, I wanna go work at that company, just like they'd say, I wanna go work at Google or Facebook. I wanna go work at Analog Devices. So we wanna up our presence here a little bit. We're talking about, um, headquarters and we're talking about where to put that. And we want some presence. And quite honestly, there's, in kind of the company, Wilmington's a great town and we like being in Wilmington. But it's, we don't have the presence on, you know, one twenty-eight or ninety-three with the, with the sign and the kind of, uh, who we are. So as we think about the best location, the economic side of that's important to us, it's kind of a tipping point, the whole package. Hey, we're here already, we could expand, could probably do it faster than some of the other options. And if the economics are right, you know, then it could be kind of the tipping point for us. So that's why we're, we're talking to you about tax incentives.
So basically, the last slide is the TIF approval process. And, uh, you know, we've been meeting again and, you know, we wanna thank Jeff Hull and his team for working, really working, um, in an expeditious manner because the company is trying to make some corporate real estate decisions. Um, and so when we first met with them, there was a calendar and looking at different potential dates. So we're, the company is so appreciative of that. So the company has submitted a TIF proposal to, uh, Jeff Hull and the TIF team. And based on our understanding, we're hoping to reach, the company is looking to reach, um, with the TIF team, a mutual, um, TIF arrangement in mid-February. Um, any, so basically the process is that, um, any TIF recommendation would then have to come back to the Board of Selectmen for a vote for the Board of Selectmen's recommendation to town meeting. Town meeting has the ultimate final say with any tax increment financing proposal. So again, so, um, hopefully by the end of February, it would then go back to the, um, Board of Selectmen, uh, with the, with the TIF proposal. And then it would be presented, um, to town meeting in May. Uh, we also understand that the Finance Committee would also be reviewing it, um, in between then. So again, in May, it would be presented, the final TIF proposal to, uh, town meeting. And then where it is a state program, the state has the final approval and that would be in June. It's known as the State's Economic Assistance Coordinating Council, the econ, is EACC. So again, uh, this concludes, uh, our presentation. We thank you so much for considering this partnership. And again, um, your, for your interest in retaining and attracting, uh, this expansion in Wilmington. Thank you.
Thank you. If I could say, I just, uh, apologize for a little bit of the cold and I know it was important for me to be at this meeting. That's why I came as, uh, you know, I came to the last meeting. I just wanna talk about a few things. So I'm all for economic development, uh, and I'll start off by talking, then I'll give it to the boards and I'll go to the town manager. I'm all for economic development. I supported back off of Ballerville Street, we had a tri-town, Wilmington, Tewksbury and Andover. And we even had the Secretary, Federal Secretary of Transportation come to our area. And that's where you see the new entrance and exit off of, uh, the target area. And, uh, I get it. I've been living in Wilmington all my life, very familiar with Analog. I think you're in a good area. There's what, Ox Bow Road, I believe, next to it. So it's really not abutting a lot of residential areas, but it does impact a few. And there's no question that you folks have been a great, great, uh, business partner with the town of Wilmington. Very, like I said, very familiar with your company. And I take a look at this and I'm all for to do something, but I'm looking at it and I'll be totally honest, it looks very aggressive. I'll be totally honest, by looking at it, in the first year to the fifth year, you're looking at ninety-five percent exemption percentage. And I understand, it's almost like Prop two and a half where, when you, you know, you, you're doing tax and you exclude, and you can include new growth, and I understand. So what we can basically do is tax the normal rate and obviously with the new growth that you folks put in with the building. That's what we're looking at, uh, basically at a discount. And I know Analog came in about two thousand ten, two thousand eleven, Jeff, in there and they were looking, cause I know it's a new law on the books, uh, the state passed this law for the TIF program. And I know in the auditorium that you were looking to do it, then you decided not to. I don't know if, uh, economic reasons, if you've been.
Yeah, let me, I can just take that for a second. Cause I was there, uh, back in the, back in those days, I came with our CFO at the time. And we were considering what to do. And quite honestly, we decided to expand in Limerick, Ireland, which is a big manufacturing site for us. And, uh, we had, in Ireland, there was a great deal of need there. It's a very important site for us for R and D, it's our European R and D center. So we put that construction project ahead of Wilmington. And honestly, it's all, it's a showcase site for Europe. It's really, it's a very good site. So that came first in the queue. Now what's happened is we're saying Massachusetts needs some attention. The company really has to decide what is our strategy in this state. And, um, the aggressiveness, or how you would describe it, the way that we look at it is we costed this thing out based on, uh, not only the one hundred and fifty-seven million dollars that we have to, you know, put into the project, but in those first few years, we are still carrying a bunch of other real estate. And as we move people in, the residency won't be able for probably two years. If we, if we make this cycle, if the, we can agree with the town on a TIF and if we could put a shovel in the ground this year, you're talking about occupancy in a couple of years. So we're carrying a fair amount of, of expense for all of these Massachusetts facilities in that time.
Yeah, I get that and I understand. That's why, one of the reasons why GE came to Massachusetts. I mean, obviously they gave a discount down in, uh, in the city of Boston. And I'm all for to do something, but like I said, I think what we need to do is, uh, obviously work with the town manager. But I think what we really need to do is have some type of negotiation team. It just seems like it's coming real quick. I mean, this would've been nice if you were here a couple of months ago for us to digest. Now you're looking for us to come up with a decision by the end of February and we have town meeting, I believe it's the first Saturday in May. And it just seems it's happening real fast. And I think you can understand where we're coming from. You know, and, uh, you know, personally, I would like to do something, but it's, I don't know if it's gonna meet your time string, uh, you know, your timetable. And like I said, I know we need to have a negotiation team. I, I think we need to see, have the assessor involved, obviously, to see what the assessment's gonna be. We need to see all the dollars and I'd just like to put this out, it'd be a vote of the board when the time comes. But we need a negotiation team and I would think, you know, the town manager, with some of his department is. But obviously the Board of Selectmen, I would love to be part of that negotiation team to sit with the Board of Selectmen whilst they decide to not do it or have maybe one or two folks involved because we're the ones that'll make that decision. But it's ultimately at the, uh, town meeting vote, you know? So I just put that out there, like I said, not saying too much about it, but it just seemed a little aggressive. But I understand, you know, you know, ninety-five percent's a lot closer to a hundred than the other way around, you know? So, but I understand, it's a good upside for the Analog. You've been a great, great business partner with the town, like I said, very familiar. I lived in Wilmington fifty-nine years. I know exactly where you're located and I know the people, uh, for many, many years.
Yeah, so can I just, I'm sorry for, for the short timeframe on this thing. So I do understand, you know, that we have given you kind of this very truncated period. So let me just kind of give you a sense of other things that are going on so you can understand. So the company has grown. We have grown quite a lot actually in California. We acquired a company called Linear Tech and their employees are based in Silicon Valley. So we decided to put, co-locate all of our West Coast employees in one facility. And so we are moving in later this year to a very, very high-tech facility, right on one oh one in Silicon Valley, called the Santa Clara Center, something like that.
Santa Clara Square.
Santa Clara Square. And it became suddenly a showcase. At the same time, we opened Boston, which has been underway for a while. And that is at one hundred twenty-five Summer Street in the Innovation District. That opened last week and suddenly we started to say to ourselves, these facilities matter. You know, engineers often don't put too much attention on where they work. And we used to think, oh, you know, the excellence of the products are what we're all about. But at the end of the day, attracting the talent in the places you want them is very, very important to the company. And Massachusetts has a fantastic ecosystem of universities and other tech companies that we get talent from and we collaborate with. So, so these other real estate moves that we made, the growth of the company following Linear Tech, put a sudden spotlight on Massachusetts with some decisions that, because of the long timeframe, quite frankly, to get anything built. You know, if the time is now, if we're gonna do something starting this year. And so we do apologize for the short.
Yeah, I get it. You know, one compliments, one compliments the other, absolutely. I mean, I'll open up to the board members, I'll go to my left, I missed a lot of any comments or questions.
Thank you, thank you for your presentation and, uh, thank you for your interest in the fabulous town of Wilmington, Mass. And, uh, I hope you stay here. I, I do have a couple of questions, a, a few of them were answered, uh, with your presentation. And I, I, uh, one of them was why, why five years at ninety-five percent? But it makes a lot of sense, cause, um, if you are true in what you're saying, you're gonna be moving six hundred, six hundred employees from Norwood and Chelmsford, you do have some carrying, heavy carrying costs. And do you think that would happen over the first, within the first five years of you?
So let me talk, if I, if I could, sure.
Sure.
So the, um, we talked about, um, so time-wise, if we could pull, and we're on, we're trying to be on an aggressive schedule ourselves. So at least I, I personally am trying to really push the schedule. So if we were actually to get started this year, this summer, cause the, you know, we could, we could potentially be in the, you know, complete construction around the end of two thousand nineteen, probably occupy two thousand twenty, realistically, spring of two thousand, that's probably the fastest we could do something. So now we've got space and we wanna renovate the other buildings. So now we're gonna be, um, so now we'll start moving, we'll, it'll be a combination. We still need to figure this out. We would move some people out of existing buildings into new space so that we can gut them and renovate. So there's a bit of a shell game doing that. And then we'd have to look at the sequence of how we start to pull down from these other communities. So realistically, we'd be pulling out of those no earlier than starting in two thousand twenty. And then there'd be some timeline over, but, but we wanna go pretty quickly cause now, once we've made the investment here, we've got other facilities that were, were still operating. And, uh, and again, the whole idea is to get people quickly. So it would start in two thousand twenty and probably take two years to be completely done with some phase period of, you know?
Yeah, in addition, just one other point, which is as we move out of those other suburban locations, we may incur significant lease charges. If leases go longer and we have to get out of those leases early.
So that, that brings me up to another question, um, in my packet of information in, that we got, um, from the town manager and his, as you called him, the TIF team. But, um, was an article in the Lowell Sun about a TIF that you guys got in Chelmsford. How would that be affected from the company you bought?
So, uh, with, uh, with Linear Tech or with Hitite? I'm actually not familiar with a TIF that we would've gotten in the town of Chelmsford.
What's the other company? I thought it began with a K.
So there's, there's, there's two companies that we've acquired of any significance anyway. There was Hitite Microwave that we acquired about four years ago.
That's a, that's a, yep. And you guys exceeded the number of employees that was required, but there was a TIF. And I don't know when that expired, if it's still involved or?
I actually, um, that was certainly before we acquired them. I know that I've personally had some discussion with the town manager in Chelmsford, just to tell him what we're thinking about. And, uh, that was certainly never brought up as a, as a, as a concern.
Just to quote the article, it was the pros and cons about TIFs. And, um, this will be, if we grant this, will be the first one that Wilmington's ever done. So we all have to be educated on it. So the more information we have, this was a pro and con about TIFs. And yours was a positive one. It, it said in Chelmsford, Hitite recently taken over by Analog Devices, it grew up to three hundred fifty-five workers and has invested nearly fifty million dollars, five times more than expected. So I assume you, they got a TIF there. So I was wondering what would happen to that if you guys moved to, to Wilmington?
Okay, I can respond to that. The TIF actually stays with the taxable parcel, uh, because if another company does come in to occupy the building, as long as the town's in agreement with that, if, you know, there are similar types of jobs, um, you know, and there's a company up and running, you know? But it's really, it's up to the, up to the, uh, the town.
So I, I should've said this first, I'm definitely all for economic development and, and happy that you're considering Wilmington. Really glad, cause the town needs the additional income, to be honest with you. So with the jobs that you have on site now, there's some coming from suburbs and the fifty new jobs, it's twenty-two hundred and fifty, twenty-two hundred and fifty employees in Wilmington. Do you have an idea what the economic value of that is? Or I know you put five million dollars up there, but I'm assuming that was with the current employees, with the other six hundred and fifty or so?
So when you think about executive staff, when headquarters jobs reside somewhere, there's a whole nother ecosystem that attaches to the work that those people do. So for example, um, you have boards of directors, you have investor meetings, you have more activity that's different from R and D and it's different from manufacturing.
It goes up a whole new, whole new level.
It does. I mean, you know, what, what Mike said, you start to have other people come in to visit. So right now, we do have customer meetings in Wilmington, of course. But you start to have investor meetings there. It just starts to, it's additive because the work of the executive staff is additive to the work that's going on already at the site. So, um, generally speaking, executive jobs, headquarter jobs are good jobs. You know, these are well-paid jobs. As you know, in Massachusetts, many tech companies that were headquartered here have gone away. And so those headquarter jobs are very, very precious things. And so you get a very educated workforce. As Mike said, there's such a robust ecosystem of jobs at the site already, it's actually really something to behold, you know? It's everybody from hourly workers all the way up to all kinds of engineering, um, sales, all of that stuff. When you add in the staffs and the executive team, it does, it's quite additive to what we'd see for economic activity.
So, um, when would the town, when would the company make a decision if they were definitely gonna move to Wilmington? You had your June, June was the state vote, the town, say the Board of Selectmen, and I'm all for the Board of Selectmen, hopefully making a decision where we could work with you on this fast-paced schedule, including a select person or two on that committee, Jeff, negotiating team, cause I think that's important. What Mr. McCoy said, when, when do you think the Analog Devices would make a decision?
So we would like, so if we go down this path, the Wilmington path, then we wanna actually put a shovel in the ground this summer so we can get going. So therefore, we're gonna make a decision by June, certainly, when they, when it's ratified, once we know that, uh, that the full package is there. I think that some of the folks who have actually, um, we're banking a little bit on success cause we're doing some permitting in parallel, that, uh, that, uh, we may or may not end up, you know? We wanna be ready so that if we can put the whole package together, we're ready to go. So we would make, uh, we'd make the decision, you know, as soon as we had the full package and we knew that it was, you know?
Thank you for that. My, my last question, might go to the town manager or you, Lynn. Um, who monitors, um, the promises that you guys have, will keep for the, the jobs? That's, that's important to any tax incentive for myself, is creating the, the more jobs and retaining the, the jobs. And that's why I wrote down the twenty-two hundred and fifty jobs, um, within a five-year. Who, who monitors that? Is that something the town does or the state or is that?
That's a very good question and it's all about compliance and accountability.
That's what I read.
And the state monitors that. They have an annual report and it's right, it's articulated right in the TIF agreement between the municipality, between the town and the company. And it articulate, and it articulates that, um, the company on an annual basis must, again, uh, forward their annual report, um, to the state. It's online, it's through a portal system that the towns have access to, it's all by coding. And, and what the company has to report is the number of jobs being retained, created, the level of private investment and any other obligations or commitments that they're making to the town, whatever is in the actual TIF agreement and applications.
Is that something annually?
Annual.
Cause if this is successful and you guys are successful, which I'm hoping for, I'm sure the town and myself are gonna wanna brag about it to attract other companies like Analog Devices into our town, along the same highway area that I call the Highway District, um, for future economic development. So is that something that's done every year in, or time, time of year, so we can?
Yes, and it's done every January. So the state notifies all the companies that have been approved TIFs, um, in January. And then in and around the end of February or March, that's when they're due. So it's typically in the first quarter.
Thank you so much, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Kevin.
Yeah, you'd mentioned earlier, uh-
Yeah, you'd mentioned earlier, um, that the state side had exemptions? What, what, what would those be? And you said the state side has and then municipalities?
Yes, um, so the state under this program, the Economic Development Center program, there are state tax credits, because it's a, you know, a three-way partnership typically between the state, the ta- the municipality and the company. Everyone's making commitments and obligations. So there is a program, uh, under the State Economic Development Center program, but because the company is classified as a manufacturer here in Massachusetts, they are eligible for the statutory tax credit for manufacturers. So that is a, a tax credit to reduce the corporate income taxes with the Department of Revenue that they'd be eligible for.
So you're going for that as well? Or you have that already?
It is statutory, so that is a benefit, um, for the company. Again, because there are manuf- only manufacturers are eligible um, to apply and to take this particular statutory tax credit.
Now, you mentioned that the existing, um, of the remaining collecting of existing real estate tax wouldn't change.
Correct.
And this just affects new construction? Does it also affect, um, the, um, renovation as well?
Yes.
Because the renovation is on existing
Right.
footing. So I don't see that it should.
Well, it, it will slightly. It will increase, um, the value slightly, you know, not as much as, you know, the major new construction project, but it would, it's a you know, an estimated, um, you know, nine million dollar spend, um, seven million dollar on construction. And so that would, you know, increase the value slightly on the existing buildings, but, you know, obviously the major, um, new taxes would be generated from the new construction project.
Yeah, let me say that, um, I appreciate your presentation. It was, it was great. And, you know, I, I read up a lot about these, um, TIFs and some good, some bad. Um, at least in this two thousand fifteen article, it was more bad than good, unfortunately. But looking at the twenty years, seems like a lot to me. And I, and I agree with, uh, Selectman McCoy. It, it seems to be moving very fast. We have to not only look out for the businesses, but we look out for the residents as well. And, and I'm sure you appreciate that. So to have such a large, um, tax exemption percentage seems an awful lot to me. And I would look forward, though, to going into some sort of negotiations over it. I'm not opposed to it, I, I just think it's, twenty years is a bit much. Um, and the percentages are a little too high for me at this point in time. But, um, I'm willing to listen, sit down, talk, negotiate. Um, uh, this would be the first time, it would be opening up, for lack of a better word, Pandora's Box to, to others. Uh, I know that, uh, other companies have, uh, come before the board, not I, I wasn't on it, but I know that others came before the board and, and, uh, they were not, um, given a TIF. Uh, so I don't know how, what that would, what that process would entail. We don't have any sort of guidelines at this point in time, which I'd like to look at and develop. Um, yeah. And I, and I guess the other question is, what if, and, and it was almost answered when Mr. Loud, uh, with his question. What if you don't meet the expectations? Is it, is it voided? Uh, uh, do we void it? Who does that?
Okay, I can, I can answer that question. So there is a decertification process, because once, if everything moved forward with town meeting, uh, then it must go to the state to have the project certified. Now, if a company, right in the TIF agreement, um, it would state, uh, you know, the, the benefits to the town, should the company not meet its obligations? Um, any of the obligations, you know, on the investment side, the construction side, the job retention side, the job creation side, any of the other commitments. So the town can petition to the state to have the project decertified. Um, and typically what we've seen is, you know, on a prope- prospective basis. So then if the project was decertified, then the following year, the town would be collecting full taxes.
I, I would hate to think that this is a deal breaker. Uh, uh, cause you mentioned at the very beginning of your presentation, um, that, just to quote you, to keep analog in Wilmington. And that kinda bothers me a little bit, because it almost seems as if we don't give you this, you're going to move out. And we wouldn't want that to happen because of a forty-year relationship and, and how close analog has been with Wilmington and its residents. And that, that kind of, comment kinda bothered me a little bit, but.
So maybe I could, I could, if I, if I may. Um, so, you know, we've been here forty years, I've worked here for over twenty years. Our bias would be, we're here to, to consolidate here. We know we need to consolidate. So we've got, you know, this is our largest campus. Um, there's a lot of things that checks a lot of the boxes for us, cause we like being here, we've been here, we've got a good relationship, we think, with the town. Uh, it sounds, and, uh, it sounds like that's a two-way, uh, you know, uh, feeling. Um, but we're looking, we're evaluating the options as to where, where's the best place to put, if we're gonna expand and consolidate, is it here or is it somewhere else? Um, quite honestly, you know, this is, this is the fastest thing we could do, because we're here. So expanding here is probably faster than, so that's kinda why the timeline. And, uh, if we can get going, once you start, we're gonna finish, that's a fact. So, um, so that's really kinda the, the thinking here, you know, is to, is to have the tipping point. Um, that makes it compelling enough that we've got the location and we've got the permits and geez, look, we've got, you know, commitment from the town that they wanna steer into and, uh, and take the edge off. It is, I see, I mentioned, you know, it is, um, you guys would know this, of course. You know, the tax rate in the town here is high relative to a lot of the, any of the other communities we're currently in and some of the other ones. And so, uh, you know, to try and take the edge off of that. By the way, on the increment, we're already, you know, uh, taxpayer in the town to the tune of, you know, between the parcel we're talking about here, one point three, almost one point four million a year, all in about one point five million with, with the properties we have in our town already. And that's not changing, it's really just how much more and how fast that grows with the, with the expansions we're talking about.
Just two more. You, you mentioned that you had, um.
Can I just add to that? I'm sorry. Let me just, so a couple of things, which is, um, so Mike is right, you know, the incumbency is very helpful, because we have this parcel, we have an idea of what we would do, and we can visualize how this thing would look. Um, but as I said, you know, there are other places that would be eager to have headquarters of a company. And so, um, for upping our profile, you know, we've been thinking about that, too. It's important to us, as we said, to become a talent magnet for all kinds of people who would work for the company. It's a very competitive job market out there. And so we really feel like we have to give ourselves an edge wherever we can, to tell you the truth. So these incentives are essential to this project, if we, as we've described them to you, okay? Um, again, we apologize for the short timeframe, but, you know, things move quickly now. And, and as I said, you know, we've changed the profile of the company in the last year quite dramatically. And with Santa Clara Square going up on Highway one oh one in Silicon Valley, if you've ever driven down that highway, we will have signage right on the highway. Boston with one twenty-five Summer Street, which is pretty promising, because there's a big ecosystem of tech companies down there. And Boston is eager to have larger companies make a presence downtown. So these incentives are essential to us. And, um, you know.
I can appreciate that. And that's why I don't think that this is a, a throwaway, so to speak. I, I think, but it's a more a negotiation type of thing that we need to do. But I guess, speaking of that, and, you know, the timeline is quick.
It is.
We've all understand that. What is, what if it doesn't make the timeline? Is it something that we could do next year in the future? In other words, I know you already took out your permit, you wanna put shovels in the ground in the summer. If it just doesn't happen, because we're in February, things need to be put in by March, the meetings in May, we don't make it, but can we continue the negotiations for it to be in the future?
Um, so there, you know, as we said, you know, you get time to put the shovel in the ground before the ground gets frozen. Um, I think, you know, in the, in terms of being transparent, there are, there are other parties interested in getting headquarters. And, and I think it's our duty to pursue, you know, whatever's the best thing for the company. So I, you know, I do think we have a great window here, it's a small, I'm sorry, as I said, I apologize for the speed. Um, but things have changed quite a bit in the last year, honestly. I've been at this company twelve years and I have not seen the kind of speed of the company and the kind of speed in Boston. Boston's changed so much in the last couple of years in being very, very hospitable to tech companies in a way that never had been before. So, um, so it's just reality. We're dealing with a, a world that's changing fast.
GE, GE's not doing too all right with their TIF.
I know, maybe we can take their space or something.
Could I just, could I just respond to your?
Yeah.
Um, okay, so regarding the timing, I know that, you know, in February is a short month as well. Uh, you know, we are working with Jeff and his team on a potential TIF and we're have, you know, we're in the process of having discussions. Um, you know, almost on a daily basis. So, you know, we are trying to, you know, we're in the, we're in the form of making progress in that area. So I know that there's a potential scheduled board of selectmen's meeting the end of March. And if it was, you know, a week or so later than that, you know, you know, I'm sure, as, as long as potentially this could go to a May town meeting, that's really the focus here. Um, so, you know, we're open to, um, looking at the calendar, you know, in, in March as well. So, you know, we, we are open to that.
Thank you. Good evening, folks. I echo my colleagues' compliments on your successful business here in Wilmington. I, uh, express my gratitude as well for, uh, your partnership with the town and your donation of the trees most recently and, uh, all you've been, uh, a great neighbor for us. So, uh, with that, I have a few questions and a couple of comments, if I may. Um, I'd just like to start, uh, try to provide to myself some more context here. I wanna ask you about, uh, first and foremost, do you, are you in the process of entering any agreements with the TIF with Chelmsford or Norwood or any other locations at this time?
We're focusing on Wilmington.
So, yeah, and that's, we, we, it's, it's incumbency. So we know that this is the one we can do the fastest. So if we can come up with the right package, the permits, and, Kim, once we get a shovel in the ground, we're going. So, uh, so that's really, uh, so we, you know, this kind of, uh, if this, if we, if we take a pause on this one, then we take a pause and we start to dig deeper in some of the other options that we might have that's working out right now.
Right. And, uh, in comparison to your Norwood location in Chelmsford and your, your new Boston location, Wilmington, I know you have a nice big piece of land over there, forty acres. Uh, do you have anything that compares to that in those loc- other locations? Are they smaller, are they larger?
The Norwood campus, uh, we've shrunk the footprint there, but there are four buildings there. Now, we leased that, we own the land in Wilmington, so.
Right. And in Chelmsford, we, uh, we actually own, uh, three different buildings there, but they're not, they're, um, uh, they're in sort of close proximity, but not all in one kinda campus, if you will. There's quite a bit of space, right, uh, um, actually adjacent to our property there, um, where right along one twenty-nine, there were Cronos was, where they actually just moved over into Lowell and there's a lot of space there. So we know that there's probably some options there, but like I said, we, uh, we haven't gone too deep on that until we, uh, see how this works out.
Great. Yeah, I'm, I'm glad to hear that. I think Wilmington obviously makes sense. I could probably go on and on of all the reasons why you should stay here. You know, the forty acres, it sounds like it's a beautiful, uh, spot for you guys to expand, and I hope you will regardless. Um, I'll just come out right out and say it. I, I do have some reservations, and one about the timeline. Uh, two is about the, the twenty-year deal. I echo my Mr. McCoy, Mr. Kyra's comments about the ninety-five percent in the first five or six years. I would also add that it doesn't dip below fifty percent for the residents until year eighteen. Is that when your first time, we'll see it under fifty percent of a discount. So I have some concerns about that. I think, again, I would be, uh, inclined to enter in some type of negotiations. I'd love to find out more. My number one concern is the precedent, you know, that this sets. You guys have been a terrific partner in our community for a long time. We also have a lot of other good companies that have been here a long time, and they might say to themselves, hey, we've been good to Wilmington, too, for a long time, we oughta try to get one of those discounts. And so I'm worried about the precedent it might set for other companies. And, um, I'd like to see some guidelines, uh, maybe a policy put in place where a, a company of your size, uh, could, could meet those guidelines that we have. And I don't wanna single out, uh, I'm not gonna knock pizza shops, but it, you know, I hate to see a pizza shop say, hey, we've been here fifty years, you know, we'd like a discount, too. So obviously, the guidelines would include, you know, the size and the revenue that's brought in. Um, but I think we need to have that discussion, because it is a nice way that not only can we keep good businesses here like yourselves, but we can also attract good businesses to come, continue to come to Wilmington. We definitely need that. But, uh, our, uh, the number one concern for me is if we're gonna take, uh, if we're gonna give people a discount going forward, it has to make sense for our residents. They've gotta be able to have, uh, some advantages for them as well. So, um, I'd really like to see some type of guidelines, policy. I know, Mr., uh, my colleagues have mentioned, uh, a task force or a subcommittee, and I would really look forward to that. I, I definitely wanna find out more. I'd be interested to see how recommendation from our finance committee. And, uh, I would definitely be in favor of finding out more and putting it before the residents and let them decide, uh, if we can meet that timeline. You know, it is an aggressive timeline, it's been talked about enough, I won't harp on it, but, uh, I appreciate the presentation. Um, but I do have some reservations and I hope we can, uh, work through, uh, work to come toward a policy that makes sense for our taxpayers.
Before I go to the town manager, I'll say, I think that we could probably get together in the next couple of three weeks, really sit down, try to hash something out, because I know you're, I know you're, you know, you've been a good, uh, company for the town of Wilmington, but obviously the upside is very good for you, but we need to look at our upside, too. And I know I mentioned earlier, I would love to be part of the negotiation team, I know Mr. Kyra, maybe, I know Corin would be three, but I don't, you know, it's up to the board. I mean, I would like to be there, Mr. Kyra would like to be there, maybe we could do, actually do something. But I think there's, I think there's a little bit room here for negotiations. And if you wanna really get this thing really going in the next few weeks and put it on the town meeting, I think we could probably do something, but you gotta meet us a little bit.
So, so, so we're, so let me just say, I mean, we're in, you know, we're pressing the timeline here, so we'll work at whatever pace you wanna work to have those discussions. Um, yeah, so we'll, you know, we'll, we'll obviously, uh.
So can I just say something about, just about the, the duration, which twenty years does seem like a really long time. But when you look backwards, you say, this company has existed since nineteen sixty-five, and we've been in Wilmington for forty years. And, you know, Analog is one of those rare companies. It's not just because I've been there for twelve years and I'm an officer of the company. I've worked at many tech companies. This is one of the rare companies really built to last. The company does things quite deliberately in order to last. And, you know, when we look at twenty years, we say, yeah, okay, cause we're gonna be, we're gonna be seventy-something years. And we have every intention of continuing to grow.
I use a little humor, but you, you're right. It's been a long time. I'm gonna say something real quick. I opened up a restaurant in nineteen eighty-four. We had AFCO Defense Systems, they had the MX, MX, uh, missile contract. Had a very small menu, and I put down the MX sub, AFCO's MX sub. And I would sell it, it was like two slices of every coconut. Then people came in from, uh, Analog, said, well, how come you don't name a sandwich after us? Call it a semiconductor. And I really didn't think about it, because at the time, I'm gonna be honest, your company was a little bit smaller at the time, and we had this big deck strike. Now, if I could look into, and I just sold it about three years ago, but if I could look in the future, you folks are still here and Sex Row and Stock are gone. So I apologize not to make that call a sandwich after you folks, alright?
I always say that, that Analog is the best company that nobody has ever heard of. And that is, you know, honestly, that's a problem of ours. We've got to do better to get people to know who we are, because we're in a brutally competitive market for not only what we sell, but getting the talent of all stripes to come to us when they can go to a zillion other companies. Part of our value proposition is our longevity, you know, and we say, look, we're here. Well, we will hire you, we will develop you, and you will work for us your whole life long. That is a rarity. I mean, in today's world, I mean, there's just not that many companies like that. And that's one of the ways, it's just the way we operate. So we do think a long time horizon's.
Is there any, uh, other members?
I just wanna say one, one thing, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Um, you're making me feel old, cause I was born in nineteen sixty-five, so. But I, I came in here thinking that, um, first of all, we changed our regular meeting for tonight instead of next week to accommodate you. So it can be done.
Yes, thank you.
And I'm convinced that, if this town wants to key to great, great employer like Analog in town, we should work with you. So that's how I feel. Um, I agree with everyone else on the board here, that the twenty years and the ninety-five and the doesn't dip below fifty and till year seven, um, eighteen needs to be negotiated, uh, based on the information that we, we have in surrounding towns and the TIFs that the towns were, other towns were giving, uh, out. And maybe we get some more information going beyond that. But I really think that the town and Jeff, I know that you, you and your team, Valerie and Dee and, and, um, Karen have done a, a great job with, um, so far, and just, we need to get it done. And Jeff, if, if we've got nothing else, I'd, I'd like to at least make a motion to put Mr. Kyra and, and Mr. McCoy on a subcommittee to get involved in those meetings.
If I could just, uh, comment on a couple of things here. I think it's certainly appropriate to put this in perspective.
I, uh, recognize that Techtron, uh, I'm sorry, Analog is the largest employer in town, sixteen hundred employees. The, uh, value of your property right now is approximately forty-one million dollars. So, it, it is, uh, a large company in town, uh, and, and certainly the longevity is there. I would note, uh, that in, in the surrounding towns that have done TIFs, notably, uh, Bill Ricker Burlington in Endover, uh, the longest TIF was fifteen years, uh, and where job creation was ranged from a hundred to four hundred new jobs. Uh, so I think these things need to be considered. I know you've talked about fifty jobs potentially over five years. I, I would also note that we've done some research on TIFs across the state for a number of years, and the average TIF is about ten years. So, I'm of the opinion that we ought to engage in conversations and negotiations, but I think the, quite frankly, a twenty-year TIF starting out at ninety-five percent for five years is, is, um, is something that I would not be prepared to support.
Mr. Loud, if it's appropriate, I'll second your motion for a discussion if I can, Mr. Chair.
All right, good discussion on the floor, second.
Thank you. Yeah, I would, I would agree, and I would, again, obviously, second that. I would like to see if they're so willing, uh, my colleagues, Mr. Kyra-
Yep.
-if these guys join the task force or team, whatever you want to call it, to negotiate. But I think that has to include putting some type of guideline together for the town that we can present hopefully to residents at town meeting. I know, and you've mentioned it, and it's, it's worth repeating, that you've been here forty years, and we really appreciate that. We value your business here in this community. But I'm worried about, uh, I'm thinking about the folks that have been here fifty, sixty, seventy, a hundred years, families that have been here, and I got to think about them first. So, um, I really hope that we can come to some agreement that really is beneficial to residents before we go and give them a discount to, to others.
I would also just point out, and, and again, I don't want to come across as suggesting that I'm not supportive of this, but I think we need to be mindful that as a manufacturer, Analog already gets a, um, favorable treatment, if you will, because they're not paying personal property taxes, as are other companies in town that are not in that manufacturing category. So, um, just to make sure we're all understanding what the circumstances are. The other piece I think we need to be mindful of is the impact on infrastructure. You know, we've got, uh, roadways, water and so on that, and again, I, I, I think it's, certainly would be highly advantageous to be able to have a consolidated campus with folks from, uh, the Chelmsford and Norwood, uh, facilities coming to Wilmington. But as much as we're, I think it's, makes sense to have discussions about how we can work with you on the taxes, we need to be mindful that there are costs that will be impacting us in terms of intersection improvements. I know, and kudos to Analog that, uh, I believe is part of the earlier, um, permit from the planning board, there's a hundred thousand dollars that has been put forward towards, uh, work on at least one of the intersections. But, but those are things, again, to kind of fill out the picture, that we have to be mindful of. As advantageous as it is to, uh, grow the business, we also have costs that we incur in terms of impacts from, uh, traffic and, uh, you know, fire response and so on, so.
You'd mentioned earlier, you had fifty-six Wilmington residents that employed sixteen hundred totals, fifty-six, and that Wilmington residents would be, if qualified, would be-
Of course.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
All right, Jeff, you all set?
I'm good.
All right, good. Well, there's a motion on the floor, there's a second to appoint myself and so, and Kyra is part of the negotiation team. Motion made and second, all in favor? Opposed? All right, four to all. All right, uh, I guess we're good to go here, and, uh, you know, hopefully, uh, maybe we could sit down and really do something, but if you're going to take a look at that a little bit.
Thank you very much.
All right?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
Yes.
Yeah, if you want to, you can get him right now. We'll take a quick, uh, one-minute recess. We're going to get selectmen shampoo out of the back room door.
We're going to, uh, call the meeting back to order. If I could maybe ask someone near the rear to shut that door so we can have some quiet in here. Thank you very much. So, Mr. McCoy and gentlemen, thank you for, uh, that, running that portion of the meeting. I appreciate everyone's patience and, uh, understanding of the circumstances. Our scheduled eight o'clock appointment is a discussion among ourselves here with regards to plans or, I guess, how to adapt to, uh, the circumstances, uh, that are occurring with Deutsch Williams as our town council. You know, I, I guess I won't belabor the point. I'll, I'll ask Jeff to summarize what has gone on over the course of the last, I guess, what, seven days or so, and, um, and bring us up to a level of universal understanding, and then we can have a conversation about what happens next. So, Jeff?
Yes, uh, so I received a call from John Foskett, uh, I guess about a week ago, thereabouts, advising me that Deutsch Williams, who is the town's, uh, legal firm that represents us on most of our legal matters since the early two thousands, uh, they are, uh, dissolving the firm and effective, uh, uh, March thirty-first, uh, they're looking to terminate the contract that they have with the town of Wilmington. So, per the contract, uh, either party, if they choose to, uh, terminate the contract in advance of its, uh, annual renewal, uh, has to provide sixty days notice. So, they've, uh, we did receive a letter from Deutsch Williams shortly after that conversation, formally confirming their intentions to, uh, terminate the contract early. So, obviously, this has implications for us, because there's a fair amount of, uh, legal work that they do for us on a wide range of issues, everything from zoning, uh, to labor law, collective bargaining agreements they participate in, preparing zoning articles, uh, working with the planning board, the Board of Appeals, a number of different, uh, town departments. So, uh, you know, the immediate issue from my perspective is, uh, identifying the smoothest transition that we can have from Deutsch Williams to, uh, another option. Since originally receiving that call, it's, uh, members of the firm, it's a fairly good-sized firm, I don't know the exact number of attorneys involved, but it appears that there are at least two elements of the firm that are, are seeking to reconstitute themselves in separate practices. Uh, one, one element of the firm, uh, is looking to reconstitute themselves as, uh, Labor and Employment Council. Uh, and the second, uh, element of the firm is looking to reconstitute themselves, uh, in generally speaking, the municipal, um, areas of law that we're accustomed to. So, that is where we are. As I say, we have until March thirty-first. In the meantime, we need to, uh, come up with a, a game plan for, uh, the short term and then the longer term. And what I presented to the board in the form of a memo is my recommendation as to how we do that.
Very well. Um, yeah, this is, uh, an interesting turn of events. It happened, I think, quite, quite literally, uh, one morning. Some of the folks went into town council's offices, and there was a meeting, and, um, they were splitting ways. Uh, I don't know if there was, uh, pre-plans ahead of it or not. I just, it just kind of came to us really out of the blue. So, the recommendation in summary that you've made, uh, is effectively to, well, I mean, look, do you mind-
Sure.
-highlighting some of what, uh, what you've recommended here?
Yeah, let, let me first of all, start by just, uh, indicating what I believe the goals that we need to be focused on are. The first goal being, uh, to make sure that we have quality and responsive legal services, whether it be in the form of a firm or an individual, uh, on and after March thirty-first of this year. We also need to provide a continuity of coverage in terms of active cases, particularly these active cases that have been longstanding, most notably, uh, Olin and Maple Meadow is, and, and, uh, New England Transrail. As many of you know, those cases have gone on for fifteen or twenty years. Uh, the institutional knowledge that folks, uh, that represent us from Deutsch Williams, I think is particularly valuable, uh, and we need to keep that in mind. I also think we need to achieve agreements with whatever, uh, firms we ultimately work with that are priced competitively for the services offered. Uh, we need to be looking at a, an effective and comprehensive, uh, transition process, which really, when you get down to it, involves everything from, uh, any files that exist with the existing firms. Granted, a lot of that is online, but there's also, uh, volumes of paper documents that we need to make sure are transitioned to the new firm or firms. Uh, and then I think it's also important to try to look at minimizing the number of firms that we're dealing with. We've been fortunate, uh, in one respect in the last many years, that, uh, Deutsch Williams has been the firm that we've dealt with, uh, pretty much on all of our, uh, legal matters, with a few exceptions, notably cable, the cable licensing process. You'll recall, we went through recently, uh, we had a separate council for that. And then, uh, the other category of, uh, legal services that we have, uh, that we obtain separately from Deutsch Williams is, uh, for tax foreclosure and tax title cases. Uh, we deal with that separately. Uh, and then the third category is bond counsel. When the town issues debt, uh, we deal separate, with a separate bond counsel. But other than those categories, uh, pretty much everything else has been handled by Deutsch Williams. So, what I'm proposing here in light of the timeline, uh, that, uh, that the town seek to, uh, speak with representatives from these two, uh, elements of the firm, if you will, the one on the employment and labor piece, the other, uh, with other council services. And we seek to, uh, enter into a six-month agreement, agreement, uh, with each, uh, portion of the current firm, uh, to essentially give us some time to go through a more, um, appropriate transition. That does a number of things. First of all, we have some cases pending, uh, some of them shorter than others, but there are some labor cases, for example, that we have that are before various boards, uh, that arbitration panels and so on that we need to deal with, uh, in the shorter term. And, uh, really to change counsel at this point, I think would be very problematic for us, just in terms of, again, the institutional knowledge and the consistency. Uh, so I think the six-month period would allow us to, uh, go through a request for proposal process, prepare a request for proposal, issue that, receive proposals. One of the things I'm suggesting is that, uh, a, a committee of department heads, uh, notably, department heads who have, uh, frequent dealings with counsel, perhaps, uh, be involved in the initial review of those proposals that come in, and then make a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen, where the board would then have a short list of firms that you could interview, uh, and ultimately, uh, as the board's authority is to appoint counsel, you could, uh, arrive at a decision. But I think having that six-month period, uh, provides us with the necessary time to do that.
Mr. Chairman?
Please.
I, I was coming here tonight with the inclination that we should stay with John Foskett, who is currently the town council, uh, he represents us. And it would, for me, it would make sense that we retain John Foskett as our, uh, town council, but the, um, as was explained by the town manager, makes sense that we, we, we take hi- his recommendation and, and move forward with that, um, provided that the negotiations are within the, the budget that we already have, uh, established. And, and I would be interested in serving a part of that committee, um, for the new town council.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just say something quick. I mean, I too would like to be, serve on that committee. I mean, after I've been on, after this term, I've served in this, uh, community for thirty years as a member of the Board of Selectmen, so I think I get to, get a good understanding of what's going on. But I just want to talk to you, Mr. Chairman. We talked about, uh, in showing a concern, I know the contract recording would be up in March thirty-first, and I, by no stretch of the imagination, need us to wait, uh, beyond that. And give the town manager some credit, when I was home recuperating from my surgery, we did talk from time to time, and we did talk about this. And Jeff had a great idea that I thought was good, basically saying, let's ask the percentages of who's doing what. Now, I have this here with me, what I'm wondering is, did the other members get this, uh, copy of the percentages as well, or just me? You and I talked about that, and-
You do have that?
Yeah, it was part of the communications that went out, I believe.
Yeah, and the only thing I bring up is this, and I understand what everyone's saying. I do agree we should probably sit down with everybody, but I do agree with the manager that, you know, it's municipal law, that's what we really need to maintain. And it sounds like Foskett, who's our town council, and once again, don't forget, Foskett worked for Deutsch Williams, Durensis, Holland, or whoever, and he was assigned to us. So, he's our town council, but assigned. But there are other fashions of that law firm, that expertise in other areas, minister, you know, other than municipal laws, zoning, contract, uh, you know, a contract, other aspects. For example, he does labor law. And I'm just looking at this, Foskett's our town council, and he only did five point six, five point sixty-nine percent of the work. And it's, we need to ask a few questions, and then I understand what the manager's saying, well, we should really maintain municipal law practice, which sounds like more Durensis' avenue. And if you take a look at this spread, it says Deutsch William lawyers departing Boston for the suburbs. So, Doc, so Foskett's actually leaving. I mean, I'd like to know, is he opening his own place, is he working for somebody, or, I mean, there's some, a lot of unanswered questions, and we need to have those answered. But according to his team leaving the town of Wilmington, they do twenty-six point six-two percent of the work. Meanwhile, Do- Deutsch, who handled Olin, New England Transrail. And let me tell you, folks, New England Transrail and Olin are two biggest things that hit this community, and we got to make sure we have top-notch lawyers on that. Their side does sixty-two point seven zero percent of the work. I mean, I'm looking at, they do two and a half times more than what Foskett and his so-called team has done, and they're leaving. You know, so, and I understand you talking about maybe hiring two different firms, and I'm looking at it. And I'll be honest, I never even voted for Durensis years ago. I voted for another, uh, law firm at the time, but they seem to have a handle on what's going on here, and they do have reputable, uh, great reputation in the community. It just makes sense that, through you, Mr. Chairman, I would hope to think that Jeff, give Paul Durensis a call tomorrow, ask him, does he have, we're talking, you talk about labor law, that's what Foskett, Eth Britis, does he have anybody who's on the labor law? Did he hire anybody? Is he hiring somebody? I mean, these are questions that need to be asked. And as far as Foskett goes, I mean, I've been in business a long time, there's some people left me to work for someone else, or open up their own business, and it happens. But I face reality, is Foskett actually, that's, looks like he's actually leaving, opening up his own law practice, or is he working for somebody else? These are questions that we need to answer. And I would hope to think that, through you, Mr. Chairman, and the town manager, at least give them both a call, but give them both a call. Or call, what, what is it? Uh, Deutsch Williams, that law office. I think you're dealing with just Durensis and dealing with Foskett. And once again, Durensis, their, their team is doing sixty-two, sixty-three percent of the work, and Foskett, he's just assigned to the town as town council. He's not, he's, he's assigned, he's not the town council, he's assigned, you know?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead.
Those percentages came from, from, uh, Paul Durensis, so we don't know if they're true or not. They came from the person who wants, they came from the person who wants the business-
The guy who owns the company.
And, um, John Foskett, well, how long-
The guy that owns the company, Deutsch Williams, they own the company, not Foskett.
Let's have a conversation. Uh, can I-
Try not to start talking over each other.
And, and according to his, uh, email, he's done no business for the town of Wilmington, and I don't know if town manager has, uh, engaged in conversation with him over the past five years, or if he dealt strictly with John Foskett. And it was John Foskett who handled the Maple Meadows, uh, that, that, uh, Paul Durensis couldn't handle. Uh, so, and Dan Deutsch, and Dan Deutsch has not even made a decision as to what firm he's going to go with. So, you can't say that he's with Durensis. But I'm just saying, uh, there's a good compromise here, and we should go with it.
Well, thank you, uh, Mr. Kyra, and I, I, Mr. McCoy, just from my perspective, and Greg, I'm coming right over. I concur with a lot of what you've said. Uh, there are aspects of the, the law, um, that the attorneys that are staying with the Deutsch Williams firm, if you will, the Boston-based firm, um, they handle- firm, if you will, the Boston-based firm, they handle probably the larger proportion of the needs of the town of Wilmington currently. But there's a portion of the services that we require, that we need, that are departing that firm, in the form of Mr. Foskett and a few other attorneys. I forgot, it was a young lady, I believe, but, and you actually did a decent job of identifying some of those here. So, to your point, Mr. McCoy, we need to learn and get an understanding of what the landscape is, who's where, what services are going to be provided, what is the firm that we kind of have known as Deutsch Williams? What is that firm going to be comprised of? Are they going to be able, are they going to be adding additional attorneys to fill in those munis, I mean, the human resources and labor law stuff that they're kind of losing? So that's exactly, I think, what Jeff was saying, at least that's what I interpreted Jeff to be saying, was, let's, if we can, negotiate with the two factions so that we can maintain continuity of the services that we need to maintain for the foreseeable, like the next six months. During that time, we can be evaluating what the capabilities of those firms are and be seeking out maybe some other firms to compare them to, and do a competitive bid situation. To me, that makes perfect sense. I don't think we should be putting all of our eggs in either of these two baskets right now, but the fact that there's professional services available from folks that were once all part of one firm and now are part of two separate firms, that still represents the needs of Wilmington. If we can get those services at a competitive or comparable rate to what we were paying the once holistic total firm of Deutsch Williams, Brooks, Durensis, and Holland, then that serves our needs in the short term. And, you know, you guys ultimately will have the challenge of identifying whether or not it's one or the other of these two now firms becomes town council going forward, or if a third-party firm comes into it. Greg, I wanted to go to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Some good points have been made, obviously, I agree with most of them. But I just want to make sure we just look at all our options here. Let's, what essentially, for lack of a better term, looks like it took place to me, is a bad breakup. So let's see how the chips fall here, when the dust settles. We don't even know who's going to side with who, who's going to go to which law firm, or who's going to create a new law firm, but I don't really care about that. I just want to make sure we identify our needs immediately, one of them being town meeting, which is obviously quickly approaching. And I have had on several occasions to work with Mr. Foskett, and I've been very impressed with him on his handling of town meetings. So he would be someone that I would definitely want to make sure that we have conversations with. Mr. Durensis, I think he hasn't, he hasn't been around for a little while, if I'm correct, in my time on the board, two years, haven't had many dealings with him at all. So I can't speak to him, but I'm sure he's a fine gentleman. And, but let's explore all the options. One other thing that hasn't been mentioned yet is the importance of our negotiations with Ristoucha Rink. So I want to make sure that that's one of our top priorities as well, in addition to Olin and others that you mentioned. So let's look at all our options. I do like the idea of going into a short-term agreement with somebody, or more than one person, to get us through this temporary period, and then we can explore what's best for Wilmington after we get through town meeting.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just reemphasize, first, to be clear, the firm of Deutsch Williams, as of March thirty first, what I'm told, will no longer exist. So whether there's thirty or thirty-five, whatever number of attorneys there are in that practice right now, some number of attorneys, I presume, but don't know the number, may just depart and pursue other options. There are elements within that firm who are going to reinstitute themselves as a firm in Boston practicing municipal law. And then there's a, another element of that group that is going to recast themselves as labor and employment attorneys. And again, we, like I say, we have active cases on the labor and employment side, people within the firm right now, who will be moving into that labor and employment practice piece that we're dealing with, that we've dealt with for a number of months now, have the knowledge of these cases. We have hearings coming up here within the next month or so. I really don't want to be in a position of bringing in a new counsel on these labor cases to try to get up to speed in the next, you know, month to six weeks on what I consider some important cases. So, you know, that's clearly a much smaller element of the overall practice, but I do believe by having this dual arrangement for six months, it makes sense, because we can get the expertise that we've relied upon to deal with our labor and employment cases, and then assuming that we're able to reach a reasonable arrangement with the other element of what was the Deutsch Williams firm, obtain the services for town meeting preparation, for zoning cases, all the other aspects of contract law, procurement law, all of those aspects that we've grown accustomed to. So that'll tide us over for the short term.
If I could just add one more thing, I think that's a good approach. I just would hope that we'll be aggressive in going after who it is we think would be of best service to the town. I'll use the analogy that, you know, Matt Patricia's wearing a different color blue today, because the Lions were very aggressive. Well, so if we identify somebody that can be of service to us, and we need that person, let's not wait to see where they land. Let's hopefully, they'll continue to work with Wilmington.
And can I add to that? It doesn't necessarily mean it's either one of these groups. It could be another law, it could be another firm out there that meets our needs. So when you go into the RFP.
Right.
It's going to draw in other qualified law firms, so that, you know, this handles one side, this handles another, but we need one firm to handle both.
Right.
And that may be the way to go.
And in the immediate term, and one of the first things that I would want to do, once we, if the board is so inclined to go this route, is to set up meetings with the representatives from each element, if you will, and find out specifically who is going to be working for your group. The folks that we have dealt with for Olin and for New England Trans Rail, if in fact the individual that has, we've worked with there is going to the Paul Durensis side of the board, then it would be in our best interest to contract with them. If it turns out he's going into practice for himself, you know, we may want to contract with him separately. Again, you know, Dan Deutsch is the individual we're talking about here, and he's been involved in those cases for fifteen years plus. So that institutional knowledge is valuable. So I think the first real step, once, if we're able to go this route, is to sit down with both groups, find out specifically who is on your team, and then we can make decisions based upon that for the short term. And then, once we can lock down this short-term arrangement, then I would put a request for proposal together and begin that process for the longer term.
Yeah, please.
Yeah, just real quick, I mean, I did talk to Jeff, and before I even, and I did reach out to Mr. Durensis, because Jeff informed me, it's, Durensis is talking to the law firms in Boston, and Foskett's the other ones that are looking to come out to the suburbs. I would hope to think, what the manager just said, and Mr. Chairman, that we invite both of them here to the town, and we need to find out some answers. He's leaving, is he opening up his own law firm? We need to call Durensis and ask him, does he have, has he retained a labor office? And I got to just say, I understand where you're coming from, Mr. Kyra, but, I mean, I owned a business, when people come in, they want to talk to the owner. I just didn't pick up the phone. I called the guys who's, and it's got it right here in the email, the guys whose name's on the door, the owner. And the owner is sending this out, where he's not involved technically with the town, but it's his law firm, six, almost sixty-three percent of the municipal law firm that's in Boston, say, Durensis' team, I don't know how else you can say it, Durensis' team is like sixty-three percent, and Foskett's team's like twenty-seven percent, you know, but we need to get answers. Is Foskett, is he opening his own law firm? We don't know that. Is he working for somebody? Call Paul Durensis, has he retained somebody who's labor law? I mean, you know, that's what we really need to take a look at, but I understand, it's going to take a little time, but we need to really look at it. I mean, and Mr. Bendel told you, I've served on this board going on thirty years after this term, and I know Mr. Durensis was the town counsel for a period of time, and the board chose to have someone else work for the Board of Selectmen at the time, but maintaining his law, his law firm, just, you know, without going back and forth on it, just put a little light on it. We can always talk more into detail at another time if it deemed that, but I don't think it really needs to deem that. So we want to do what's best for the community. I think we want a law firm who is going to do the, never mind who's going to serve us or a few individuals in this community, we want a law firm that's going to serve the best interests of this community. New England Trans Rail, Olin, the two biggest things that hit this community. And my money's with those attorneys, whoever that is, and I'm not just saying that now. I talked to Jeff, said, you know, it sounds like Durensis' team, those are the heavy hitters. I've been involved almost thirty years, folks. The names that Jeff told me, those are the heavy hitters that do all the work. And Foskett's side, these are the people, I never even heard of any of these people that are leaving Foskett. And I'm being honest, and I'll tell you, I never even voted for Durensis. I voted for Copeland and Page on the record, and I thought, as time went on, I go, no one's more fair than I. I thought they did a pretty decent job, and you want to get your best bang for your buck, and they do a great job. It's the owners, I'm not saying Foskett, once again, John Foskett. And I have to believe these, why would an owner, if that'd be like me owning the restaurant and giving misinformation, I want to be honest, and people want to go see the owner. John Foskett did five point six-nine percent of the work, that's it, and he's our town counsel, so he's not our town counsel. He was assigned to us, because we hired this big law firm, and we need to find out who's staying with who. Because I think, I don't know, I've been in business a long time, I think there's a little bit more to this, and I know they're very reluctant to say anything. I'm sure these lawyers, they get contract after contract, breach of contract, I'm sure they got, you know, if you say this about that one, then they can come back and come after you. So believe me, you know, one thing will happen, never a lawyer.
I think we're all saying the same thing. Do you have something you want to offer?
I just, from reading what I got here, and listening to all you guys talk about it, we're being asked to come up with a solution for short-term. And I happen to agree with the approach that the town manager's coming with, is what he's put on paper in front of us, to talk to both sides, because we need both sides on the short term. That gives us six months to come up with an RFP, to hire a law firm that can do, hopefully do in-house everything. My question is, six months comes up, we get an RFP, and we've got, we've got these big cases, and the institutional knowledge that Jeff and Mike and Kevin and Greg all said, does it make sense on a future RFP to be able, in that RFP, retain special town counsel for Olin and Trans Rail and Ristoucha and some other big cases that are pretty old? Does it make sense for the future, does it make sense for us to do it that way? But in the short term, Jeff's asking for us to come up with, he wants, he wants us to, he wants to contact both sides, get, set up a meeting with the couple of selectmen, and he mentioned some department heads, to come up with an agreement for the next six months. That's all he's asking us to do right now. That's what we should be talking about, that's what we should be doing.
So moved.
Yeah.
So your point that you made.
I agree, I agree.
The discussion about, you know, what the criteria ought to be going forward with permanent town council, that's a conversation that you folks can have at some future date. Tonight, I think what you just said, Ed, is spot-on. We just need to have continuity of services, and the proposal, or the plan that Mr. Hall put forth, I think, provides that. That being said, if you, and I think it is important that we establish some meetings with the, I don't know, I'm going to call it the Foskett side and the Boston side, whatever we want to call it, the Suburbans and the city, the employment law versus the municipal law side, just to have meetings with representatives from both factions to understand who's going where, and where the professional services are, so that we can identify with whom we're doing business. So if you want to start setting up those meetings, you wanted to have representatives from this board in those meetings with you. That was a request or a suggestion you had made, yes?
Yeah, certainly my suggestion, again, where the board is tasked with appointing town council, the thought is to have perhaps one or maybe two members of this board be involved in the conversations that I would propose having with each side.
I'd love to participate, but I think it's probably prudent, at least, that Mr. McCoy and I was going to suggest, Mr. Kyra, if either or both of you were willing to participate in those conversations, I think that would be serving the town well.
Yep.
Yes, please.
Yeah, I'd be happy to have those two gentlemen do that. I would do it myself, but I think we would run into a quorum issue, so we'll stick with two. And I'll move that we go ahead, and if this is what you're looking for, Mr. Manager, you're looking for a motion tonight?
I, yes.
Okay, well, I would move that we go ahead with the plan outlined for a short-term solution outlined by the town manager, and include Mr. McCoy, Mr. Kyra as members of that negotiation team.
I second that. I second the discussion, I just want to be crystal clear that we're going to have the so-called, I'll use your city team, with the country team, they're going to both come in down the road, and we're going to sit down and ask all these kind of questions, correct? Just want to make sure that's the case.
And we're going to be looking to you guys, ultimately, with the town manager, to report back to us and let us know what the conversations are.
The motion includes exploring all options.
Continuing that discussion, by the way, as we go to town meeting, we're going to need, we always have a member of town council. It has been Mr. Foskett representing the firm for the last several years, anyway, at town meeting. I have a, listen, I won't be at town, I'll be there, but I'll be out in the audience, but it's my opinion that either Mr. Foskett, if he continues to be available to us, or Mr. Deutsch would be ideal, and maybe Lou, maybe Lou Ross. I'm not sure if that's his specialty, but either, any of those three individuals would be the ones that I would want to see onstage, representing the town. And I single those specific three individuals and nobody else. That's my personal feeling, I share that with you, you guys can.
Sounds fine to me.
That's fine, but I just want to make it clear that John Foskett was appointed as town counsel, just so that's clear of that.
Yes, the arrangement, as I understand, I wasn't directly involved at the time, but Paul Durensis had served as what I would call the gatekeeper, certainly more than that, but there needed to be one individual from the firm who was the point of contact, and whenever a case came up, the manager at the time, Mike Kyra, now me, calls that point person, provides the individual with the particulars of a case, and then that individual, formerly Paul Durensis, currently John Foskett, would direct it to the particular attorney within the firm that has the expertise to deal with that. So that's really the way it has worked, certainly since I've been town manager, and I believe had worked that way prior to my being town manager. So, you know, certainly John Foskett has been involved, as everyone knows, he is involved in the town meeting preparation, he attends the town meetings, provides advice at town meetings, but one of his other roles has been to direct cases to the appropriate people within the firm that have the expertise to deal with them.
Yes. Okay, so unless there's any further discussion, if you have a motion on the floor and a second to proceed with the town manager's recommendation for handling town council in the short term. Any more discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you, Jeff, for that.
Okay.
And we'll look forward to getting those dates scheduled, and you can communicate with Mr. Kyra and McCoy on that. At your convenience, we can.
So under communications, I trust we do not want to go through the memo from town, about town council.
Thank you.
Why not, right?
So next, under correspondence, is a memo from me to the board that is, outlines the petition articles that were submitted by the deadline, which was Friday at four-thirty. I just distributed maps to the board so that you can see where these parcels are. I'm not sure that they're necessarily in the order that they appear here on the page. The first article is to authorize, authorization to petition the state legislature to allow Adam Silva, his test results from his 2016 civil service exam, to be allowed for employment consideration as a firefighter. So under civil service, when an individual achieves the age of thirty-five, if they are not, have not had their scores approved, or been put into the civil service system, they're no longer eligible. So we periodically will get these requests to allow someone who is at or exceeded the age of thirty-five to be permitted to be considered for civil service. The next one is a, an amendment to the inhabitant bylaws, chapter five, public regulations regarding adding a new section to ban disposable, single-use plastic bags at retail and food and grocery establishments. So this would be a change in the inhabitant bylaws. The next two articles, or the next, yeah, the next two, rezone from residential twenty to neighborhood business, map twenty-four, parcel one-twenty, on nine-sixty. to neighborhood business, map twenty-four parcel one twenty on nine sixty Main Street. So this is down at the very end of, very southern end of Main Street in Wilmington, right on the Woburn Line. Uh, this article seeks to, again, rezone from residential, uh, twenty to neighborhood business. Uh, I should reference the petitioners here. So the first one, um, with regard to civil service was an Adam Silva. Uh, the second one on the, um, plastic bags is, uh, Julian Hooper. Uh, this, uh, most recent one, the rezoning here, is, uh, Michael Newhouse. Uh, Mr. Newhouse also is proposing to rezone from residential twenty to general industrial. Uh, the same parcel I just referenced, map twenty-four parcel one twenty, again, located at nine sixty Main Street. Uh, the next article is to rezone from residential sixty to residential twenty. Uh, parcels at map twenty-three, parcels, uh, six through one oh six and eight through one oh eight. Uh, this is, uh, eight and ten Harold Avenue, Sandra, uh, Lab- 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 Liberty, I guess it is.
La Liberty.
La Liberty, okay, sorry, I, uh, that one was not successful. Uh, so that, that's a rezoning, and the next one is also rezoning from residential sixty to residential twenty. Map twenty-two parcels thirteen thirteen A and fourteen through twenty. Uh, this is at eighteen and fourteen Hopkins Street. Uh, the proponent is, uh, Lindsey Riley. Uh, the next one is to rezone from residential sixty to neighborhood mixed use. Uh, map one parcel twenty-one A, uh, this is three thirty-three Andover Street. Uh, the proponent is Jacqueline Welch. Uh, then the final, uh, article is to rezone from residential, uh, sixty to residential ten. Uh, map eighty-four parcels eleven fifteen forty-eight, forty-nine, forty-nine B, forty-nine C, fifty, fifty-one, and fifty-four, seventeen and fourteen Royal Street, forty-eight and fifty McDonald Road, two Bernstein Road, twenty-two, twenty-one, and twenty-three Pomfret Road, and fifty-four McDonald Road. Again, the proponent is Jacqueline Welch. I would just note, uh, because these came in late in the day on Friday, uh, just, uh, really before the close of business, uh, the town clerk has not yet had, uh, an opportunity to certify the requisite number of signatures. Uh, I would expect that to happen in the next couple of days, uh, and board will be notified when that does happen.
Mr. Chairman, I'm just curious, I live off Ando Street, is this the Old Charapafon, by any chance? It's twenty-one acres, they're looking to rezone that to, uh, neighborhood mix, which is basically apartments.
Yeah, it is, that is the, uh, Charapafon.
It is, huh? Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, okay, next, under, uh, correspondence, is a memo from, uh, the town clerk. Uh, just updating the board on the work that's been done with respect to the inhabitant bylaws. You may recall, uh, several months ago now, uh, the board appointed members to serve on the inhabitant bylaws committee. Uh, they have looked at the, uh, the full, uh, bylaw and prepared a number of recommendations. Uh, these will be reported at the annual town meeting. Uh, they're suggesting really two forms of, uh, work to be done to the inhabitant bylaws. One, our edits in terms of the form itself, the layout, uh, the presentation, make it a bit more user-friendly. Uh, the second element is with respect to content. Uh, the, a- at this point, it's my recommendation that where the volunteers have put forward recommendations, uh, that it then be taken up by staff to actually, um, over the next year, uh, put together, uh, recommended, uh, actual changes in the format and content. Uh, then bring that back for, uh, you know, presentation to the board of selectmen, and ultimately to a future town meeting.
Jeff, what about two thousand nineteen?
Uh, two thousand nineteen for the actual changes. What will happen at the eighteen meeting will be, a report will be issued, uh, that will summarize what the, uh, group did this year. Uh, next is a letter from Kelly Maggie Wright, Executive Director of Minuteman Senior Services. Uh, she is, uh, communicating to the board about the National March for Meals campaign. It's sponsored by Minuteman Senior Services, uh, and they are looking to, uh, generate public awareness about, uh, senior hunger and to, uh, celebrate the services provided by senior nutrition programs. Uh, also essentially garner more support for increased fundraising for the senior nutrition programs, and they're encouraging, uh, board members, uh, to get involved.
Thank you.
Uh, we have correspondence from Verizon Phios. Uh, this is an annual document that they're required to provide. Uh, the Form five hundred is really their complaint form, or the state's complaint form, uh, where they have to identify, uh, the number of complaints that they've received and the, uh, nature of those complaints. Uh, according to their records, there were a hundred and fifteen complaints, uh, that were, uh, made to Verizon over calendar two thousand seventeen. One hundred and nine of those complaints, uh, dealt with equipment-related issues. There were four related to service interruptions, uh, one regarding appointment and service, and, and one miscellaneous.
It struck me that there was only, there was zero complaints about billing. I was surprised to see that number.
Everybody's happy with their pricing.
Yeah, apparently.
Uh, next is, uh, an email, uh, provided to the board from, uh, Dan Veerman. Uh, he is, as you know, on the Board of Appeals, his term is coming up, uh, at the end of, uh, well, within the next few months here, and he's expressing his interest, uh, to be reappointed uh, to that position for another term. There's no action required by the board at this time.
When would that, when would that be coming up? Do you have, uh, I forget, do you not remember off the top yet when we bring that up?
The appointments typically are made in May, right? Uh, April, actually, April.
Second meeting in April, yes, okay, thank you.
Uh, then, under, uh, Board to Consider, we have a request from the Recreation Director, Karen Campbell, uh, to allow, uh, for the use of the town common on Saturday, March thirty-first, at two P M. For the, uh, Easter egg hunt, assuming the weather holds, otherwise it would be in the high school, but, uh, looking for authorization to use the town common.
Move to, uh, grant the request to have the use of the town common for the annual Easter egg hunt.
I'll second that.
Made by Greg and seconded by Ed, uh, any discussion? It's a great event, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Thanks to the Rec Department for continuing that great tradition. Uh, we are at public comments, would there be anybody that would wish to offer a comment or a question? Yes, sir, if you don't mind, uh, state your name and your, uh, your, uh, address, please, for the record.
Certainly, Jerry Bruno, thirty-seven Oakdale Road. And this is regarding the possible construction of a forty-eight-bed facility at three sixty-two Main Street. As you are all aware, this will impact above two hundred residents in the area and their families. And our concerns, as you're also aware, are rooted in data-driven reality, and they concern safety and financial stability. Uh, other concerns, and I'm going to quote Mr. Kyra, because he came up with a very good contract, a very good image for me, when he used the term Pandora's box. And that's in everybody's mind right now that lives in that area. So we want to make a request, and I don't think that's an unreasonable request, considering our situation. Would like to ask the board to publicly state their position on the construction of this facility. And we realize that this is out of your hands, but you are influential, uh, individuals, and you are elected officials, and we believe that we should have the right to know. And we respect the fact, if you don't want to share your opinion with us. So I would ask each of the selectmen to state your position on the construction of a forty-eight-bed facility at three sixty-two Middlesex Ave. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bruno. Um, certainly, uh, I was aware that, uh, that a number of folks, uh, yourself and, and other folks from the neighborhood were going to be, uh, present this evening. Uh, we had received a number of letters, and, uh, I was aware that there was a, a sort of a campaign to make that specific request. Um, I took the position that I didn't want to create an agenda item for this discussion topic, because frankly, it is a, a matter that doesn't have, that we don't have jurisdiction over. That being said, um, I completely respect your request, and I, I just offer up the opportunity, if any of my colleagues wish to share their feelings on this, the, the opportunity is now. If not, that's, I respect that as well, so. Uh, yes, Mr. Love?
Uh, I'll say one thing about three sixty-two Middlesex Ave. It's a great idea for a detox, and it's a wrong location. So I'm against the, um, proposed, uh, location of a detox center at three sixty-two Middle- Middlesex Ave.
I mean, you know, is there any doubt in anybody's mind where I stand on the thing?
Mm-hmm.
You know, I mean, I agree, I mean, I said it, uh, day one. You know, we all have hearts, we want to see something like that come to the town of Wilmington, we really care. I mean, it's, it's a national epidemic, but it's just one word, it's just simple, it's just the, uh, wrong location. And, uh, I do support the residents and the neighborhood, but it's much bigger than that, it's town-wide. And as you could see at the town meeting vote, eighty-five percent of the people at the town meeting vote, o- voted overwhelmingly to put it in another zone, general industrial. You know, given that said, these poor folks out there worked hard and tirelessly for that, making sure, making our community even better, uh, now they have to fight for their rights now, and fight for their neighborhoods. So I think people should rally around those folks, I'm going to be with you, come the, uh, February fourteenth, guy all the way. And, uh, I just really hope that the, uh, Board of Appeals really see this for what it really is. And, uh, I would love to see them vote against it. It's crazy if they ever voted for it, it just doesn't make sense, it's the wrong spot. Too many families involved, and, uh, this is our town. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I, uh, I am in, uh, favor of a, a detox facility, um, and I was opposed to the zoning. Um, but as was stated, this is out of our hands. It's in the hands of the planning board and the zoning, uh, Board of Appeals, so there's, uh, nothing that I would say that would influence them. But it was med- ma- made mention by Selectman McCoy, that, uh, general industrial, that's where he would like to see it go, general industrial. Well, to make you aware, that across the street from three sixty-two Middlesex Ave, over where, I believe it's Pizza Mia, Eli's, Waltham Street, that's general industrial. So I guess you're okay with it going across the street, because that's what would, uh, could happen. Just want to point that out to the residents.
I could just say, Mr. Chairman, just go, you know, I, Mr. Kyra's right, it's not Eli's, it's Pizza Mia at the Shell Station, and then ten, twelve years ago, they put what neighbor, uh, what is the neighborhood business? No, what is it, uh, Central Business, where the Channel Building is, so you're going to see a bunch of condos go there. And then you're right, to the right-hand side, Waltham. But we never kept that a secret. We told people at the planning board public meeting, we were very upfront with folks, that is it going to be next to some homes in general industrial? It's a lot, lot less invasive in general industrial, as opposed to general business or neighborhood business. But no, you're right, and I think, I was, I can say, my, I'm the one who presented the article, and I was forthcoming, very honest. I said that at the planning board public hearing, I said that at the town meeting, and people realized that. So we didn't throw any curveballs to the folks, we were honest and upfront with everybody about that.
Through the chair, actually, it wasn't said by you at the town meeting, it was said by me. At the very end of the discussion, I said that the opposite side of the street was general industrial and could just move the detox over to the opposite side of the street.
Hey, can I tell you, I did say it at the town meeting, a lot less invasive, and I know you made that point, when they were, right before going to the actual vote, you, uh, wanted to make that point clear, and you're right, you know? We both did it, how's that, does that sound better?
Sure.
Okay, great, thank you, we agree on that.
You do.
You guys are great. Uh, Greg, anything?
Sure, I'll just, uh, simply repeat what I said the last time I was asked my opinion about, uh, a project like this back in September, which is to state that I'm not opposed to a detox facility in Wilmington.
Yeah, I'm going to be real, uh, real brief in my commentary as well. Uh, my position has been very clear, um, i- i- I made it very clear, I think, at the, um, planning board hearing, the public hearing prior to the special town meeting, um, where I frankly, I, I expressed that I would, I was hoping, I really was hoping, that Mr. Neeland, um, as a business professional in the town, would recognize, uh, that, that, you know, that continuing forward with his plan here was not necessarily, uh, not necessarily the best, in the best interest of the entire town. Uh, and I had hoped that maybe Mr. Neeland, and that we collectively, as a community, could identify, uh, another location where we could maybe do a larger facility, a larger facility that could be partnered up with, uh, perhaps Mass General or, or Leahy Clinic, or something, one of the larger, uh, medical institutions, and do it at, at a larger, more, I don't want to say more professional, but on a, 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 a larger magnitude, to help more people. And that's why, those of you that were at the special time meeting know, uh, or probably know that I actually voted in favor of the change in zoning. It was a hard vote for me to make, but I hoped that by virtue of the change in zoning, the future would provide, or we would provide for a future opportunity for a larger facility to do more good and help more people. So, um, that being said, you know, I still do, I still do hope that that kind of a facility can potentially find a home here in Wilmington, in the Ballad Vale or in a general industrial area. That said, I would not, I, I will not, I, and I would never, put any kind of pressure on members of the Board of Appeals to vote in any way. I hope, and I, I believe that they will listen to the case on its merits and will make a determination, um, of, of how to vote based on the information that they have at their hands. And I will not put pressure on them to go in either direction. So, uh, that's, I hopefully, uh, you know, sufficient for, or satisfactory to, to the folks that are here tonight. I hope you, uh, understand that we're, where we are on this. Um, anybody else, public comments? Mr. West?
Hi, Frank West, Giverish McRae. Uh, a few months, well, about two months ago, the Board of Selectmen had a meeting at the high school that actually dealt with housing and different types of housing, affordable housing and, uh, et cetera. And one of the recommendations that I had made as a resident, and will make again tonight, is that when we're looking at rezoning land, that somehow you got to add some sort of an affordability con- uh, component to when, when, uh, when land gets rezoned. As an example, tonight, you've got so many parcels of the land, the Charapafon now being one of them, that, you know, a developer, I'm assuming bought the land, and is looking to rezone so they can do cluster developments. Well, it's nice to have the affordability component, you know, component in there as well. And even in single lots, where somebody might have bought a lot as R sixty and said, hey, I'm looking to help my kids out, but, you know, how about helping the kids of Wilmington out in the future as well? So that, you know, if you got a house that's R sixty, you want to build a house for your son and daughter, that's fine. But the town has given them a bonus, of essentially giving them free land, if you will, by, by allowing the re- a rezoning. So my thought is, is that if, you know, if you guys could look at, when you're looking, when you're thinking of affordable housing, especially now that you're looking at the whole idea of forty Bs, possibility of forty Bs coming into town, depending on how our, uh, how our census makes out in two thousand twenty. Again, is that going to solve all of the problems? Absolutely not, but again, you know, if there's chances to get an, an extra affordable house here and there, it just gets us further back up to that ten percent. It's just, just a thought that you, you might want to consider.
Thank you, Mr. West. There's a term, what was the term?
Inclusionary.
Inclusionary, thank you very much, Ed. Uh, that, that, we've, we've been talking about this, uh, for quite some time, and inclusionary zoning was a, a subject that was, uh, a part of that conversation, uh, as well as previous conversations. And forgive me for not recognizing, as I'm sitting here talking to you, where we kind of were on that. I, I think we moved, not didn't move away from it, we really didn't, uh, we didn't pursue it.
Well, we are, we will be pursuing it. Uh, the planning director is going to be, uh, working with her staff to develop inclusionary zoning. The challenge there, and one of the things that I think is advisable, is that we not simply, uh, draft it in-house and then put it on the warrant, because there are a lot of stakeholders, uh, involved, and I think it's advantageous to get input from the development community as to what they think makes sense, whether it's, you know, in terms of the number of units that triggers inclusionary zoning, just by way of a refresher. So inclusionary zoning would basically say that when a development is put forward, uh, that a certain percentage of those homes, uh, must be affordable. Uh, s- in, in a number of communities have done this. Uh, one of the considerations is, you know, what is that trigger point? Is, if any development of greater than four homes, uh, that would be the trigger point? And is it twenty-five percent, is it twenty percent? All those things need to be, uh, factored into this, uh, bylaw, and so Valerie Gingrich is- All those things need to be factored into this bylaw, and so Valerie Gingrich is looking to begin those discussions with the development commuting, community in the upcoming year, so that at the 2019 town meeting, the plan would be to have an article that would be put forward.
So, that, that is a very organic way of adding some additional stock of affordable housing into the community. When I say organic, it doesn't happen in a big bang. It's, it's a few, a development of, say, whatever, like you said, four to 10 houses. Some proportion of them might end up as affordable, but it doesn't, it doesn't put a large number of affordable or senior housing into, into stock quickly. It happens over like a 10-year period, or really over the course of production.
Right, and, and I think the, the, one of the advantages to an inclusionary zoning bylaw is, aside from the obvious one of providing more affordable units, is that it allows for the affordable element to keep pace with development, because invariably, what happens in communities everywhere is that, you know, if a community is able to get to 10% because they've had a large development, like an Avalon or some other facility like that, where they count not only the affordable units, but the whole grouping as affordable, those kind of projects can get you to the 10% in a hurry. The challenge is, without an inclusionary piece, you know, development continues, as we've seen in Wilmington, whether it's 50 new units a year, or 30, or 70, and if those are all market rate, over the course of the next 10-year cycle between census periods, you're now potentially down below your 10% again. So, it really serves as a tool to try to keep pace with ongoing housing development.
To Mr. West's comment, this has been talked about, I believe, for close to a year and a half, when Judy O'Connell was the chairperson. So, it is a little disappointing to hear that the Development Director is just beginning the process, when this has been brought up well over a year ago, and that the process hasn't even begun, and now we're pushing it out even further. So, just like to express my disappointment in, in that process so far.
In my opinion, Kevin, I think it would have been nice to have this in the 18-town, this part of town meeting, but again, if it takes a 19-town meeting, and it may help on our 2020 census, I guess, I don't know. Again, now you're pushing another bunch of houses that are being built without this inclusionary bylaw, to basically kind of go and back the Avalon. And one other comment I'd just like to make separate is, I just want to, I think, thank the board in general regarding, you know, bringing Avalon in, and basically saying that you want to have guidelines, not just deal with Avalon, because you know yourself.
Analog.
Analog, I'm sorry, analog. Right around its corner, you're going to see the Textron property more than likely. Somebody may come in within the next couple of years and say, hey, you know, Textron's gone, we want to buy it, buy it. You know, we want to see, you know, and if you give Analog a really good deal, the Textron new owners may want that same or a better deal. So, I'm glad that you're looking into that as a guideline, not just working with Analog. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on that? Any other public comments before I shut that down? Yes, Mr. Smaglier.
Hi, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Lou Smaglier, 26 Island Park Drive. Just a couple little things. If, with the committee to collect, to hire the new town council, if they want to reach out to like former selectmen that were on that board, like myself, when we fired Mr. Durezas, you know, that might be a good key for you to, you know, another avenue to reach out. And thank you for serving on this board, all of you. People don't realize that it is a volunteer position, and sometimes you take a beating up there. And I appreciate the way you guys have done it with class, and, you know, as far as putting your name out there, whether you're for or against a detox facility in a certain area, you know, you, you didn't have to, because like, like you said, there's no, you're never going to vote on it. It's not in your board's, it doesn't encompass your, your board. If somebody wants to politicize it and make an issue out of it, it's great. It, it, this is what we do. This is, this is America. But you guys stand, stepping up and explaining how you guys felt is great, because it's something you didn't have to do. And as far as Mr. Neeland goes, I don't know him personally, but he's done a lot of good things over the years for the town, and I don't think that he just is sticking it to the town, as has been said, the whole town, because it's a big town, 24,000 residents plus or minus. The man's done a lot of good for the town, and I kind of feel like he's taken a bad rap, too, whether it's warranted or not, but social media, or at, at certain meetings. I think he has done so much good for the town, and yeah, he's in it for the money. That, that's what we do. It's called capitalism. That's why we work. That's why we try and, you know, make more money so we can support our own families and that. So, just, just a couple comments that I wanted to say here tonight. And there was something else, but I forgot.
Mr. Chairman, just real quick, I'd just like to, if I could say, Lou, relative to Paul Durezas, I don't think he was fired. I think he was more redistributed, not fired, redistributed.
All due respect, Mr. McCoy, I was on the board. He was fired. There was no way that we were going to go with Durezas, the, the name of that firm, if he was our town council. That, that was, that was it. He was not going to be our town council.
I think we look at the minutes, it will be every difference of opinion.
Well, that, that's okay. We do, but sometimes you just can't say stuff at a meeting, and, you know, it doesn't make it true, so.
Specifically what? What are you talking about?
I'm talking, no, I'm just saying, in general, you just can't say stuff, not you personally, but anybody. You can't just say stuff, say stuff at a meeting and make it true. But I was on the board when Mr. Durezas was no longer our town council.
Redistributed, wasn't fired. I didn't even vote for the law firm.
Yeah, oh, no, I know you didn't.
Let's call it for what it is.
That's right. But he was not going to be our town council, and there's various reasons, and we're not going to debate that.
Well, irrespective of that last little bit of fun, I, I appreciate your comments, Mr. Smaglier, and I think they were very well said and well offered. I appreciate you being here tonight as well. Unless there's anything else, we'll move into our new business. Any reports? Greg, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just have, just two dates I want to make sure that people are aware of, and one is this Wednesday, February 7th, and the next is next Monday, February 12th. Our four finalists for the new Wilmington School Superintendent will be interviewed by the school committee. The public is encouraged to attend. There's also a forum right before the interview where folks, residents can get a chance to meet the candidates, and I would encourage everyone to do so.
Thank you. Kevin, anything?
I'm good.
Very good?
I'm good.
Mr. Chairman, I, I take my time here to give a shout-out to a veteran, and thanks to Lou Smaglier. He gave me, David Train was a U.S. Marine Corps. He recently passed away due to complications of Agent Orange. David was a highly decorated Vietnam Vet, including two Air Medals. May he rest in peace and thank him and his family for his service to this country and this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Just one quick thing in our packets this week, gentlemen, you will see there is a trifold brochure. It is the Town of Wilmington Guide for New Business. It did not exist prior to, I don't know, a couple, about a month or so ago, and this really was the effort that spawned out of working with, collaborative effort of the Chamber of Commerce and Valerie Gingrich's office here at Town Hall. And, and really, it's just the beginning bones of, of an economic development kind of concept of, it's a roadmap for new businesses that might want to come into Wilmington and get set up, and what are the process, what are the steps? It's available, of course, online. It'll be on, it's on the town's website, but it's also here scattered throughout Town Hall. I think it might be at the, it's certainly at the Chamber of Commerce offices as well, and I think it might be at the library. So, avail yourself of that if you are a local business and would need help navigating the myriad bureaucracies that, that are, are part of government. That is all for me. Jeff, important dates, please.
Yeah, important dates, February 6th is the next Finance Committee meeting, 7:00 PM here in Room 9. The topics will be the public buildings and public works departments budgets. February 13th, Finance Committee meeting here at Town Hall, 7:00 PM. Police, Public Safety, and Central Dispatch and Fire. February 15th, Finance Committee, Town Hall, Room 9, 7:00 PM. Town Clerk, Board of Health, Veteran Services. February 19th, Town Offices will be closed in honor of President's Day. February 26th, the next Board of Selectmen's meeting, 7:00 PM. February 27th, another Finance Committee meeting here at Town Hall, Room 9, 7:00 PM. Historical Commission, IT, and the Board of Assessors. March 1st, Finance Committee meeting, the library in the Banda Room, 7:00 PM. Recreation, Library, and Elderly Services. March 6th, the Finance Committee meets again here, Room 9, 7:00 PM, to review the Shawshin Tech budget. March 8th, Finance Committee, Town Hall, Room 9, 7:00 PM. The Wilmington Public Schools budget. And then March 12th is a Board of Selectmen's meeting, 7:00 PM.
You know, you just said the Banda Room at the library, and I forgot at the beginning of the meeting, I wanted to recognize that, I forget the date, but it was last week, that one of our predecessors here passed away, Mr. Banda, and I think it was mentioned last week, but I just wanted to acknowledge again and pass on our respects and our condolences to the entire Banda family. Certainly, he served our town very well.
If I could, maybe we could just offer a moment of silence at this point. He was a former selectman, obviously, very influential in our town.
Most assuredly.
At this time, if that's appropriate.
Let's start that now. Thank you, Greg, for mentioning that, and hats off to the Banda family. If there's nothing else, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded. Made and seconded. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you all, and good evening.